I now call to order the regularization meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, April 16, 2019 at 6:30 PM. Roll call please.
Mayor LaHoozis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terri Paney.
Here.
Commissioner Seber is absent and excused. Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Donovan.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Mayor Ted Morris from the Salvation Army. If you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegion.
Spell for prayer. God, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for our mayor. We thank you for the city manager, the commissioners, elected officials, representatives from law enforcement here. We thank you for the trust placed upon their shoulders by the citizens of our community. We thank you for the citizens who are here to be a part of this discussion. We pray that deliberations made, decisions made will be those that will be pleasing to you. Thank you for allowing us to be here and giving us the freedom of our country to be able to do so in a public place such as this, where it's in your holy and your precious name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegion to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here tonight. We will begin our meeting tonight with our public comments on the items that will not be discussed tonight. If you have any comments, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll be given four minutes.
Yes, my name is John Hall, and I live at 208 West Lemon Street in Tarpon Springs. And I guess I get six minutes, right, from my wife?
Yeah, can you mention her name, please?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is John Hall. My wife Linda and I purchased our home on the corner of Lemon and Bass Street in 1997. Our property is a half a block away from Spring Bayou in an area known as the Fruit Bowl. Our home was built around 1905, and the two-story duplex on the property was built around 1925. When we purchased the property, the duplex was rented out full-time, and over the years, we had several yearly leases. Our experience with long-term leases has been a mixed bag. Some tenants were good, and others we were glad to see go. It has been our experience that many people who rent full-time do not have the same pride in the properties they rent as we do. We noticed over the years that our prop- our place was deteriorating, and we simply could not maintain it to our standards. Approximately seven years ago, when our permanent tenants left, we decided to renovate both apartments, furnish them, and rent them out using Airbnb. Our apartments are extremely well-equipped and have become a very desirable place for vacationers looking for first-class accommodations in Tarpon Springs. Since my retirement, this has proven to be a very successful endeavor for us. We have been the host to literally hundreds of families from all over the world. The income we receive from this type of rentals has allowed us to stay in our home and maintain it to the high standards that we and our neighbors can be proud of. With the rising cost of taxes, insurance, flood protection, and everything else, we would find it very difficult to continue to live in our home without the additional income. We have never had any issues renting out our apartments through Airbnb, and we have never had one complaint from any of our neighbors over the last seven years. In fact, I have spoken to most of my neighbors, and they have been very supportive of our endeavors. On March 19th, we received two registered letters from the Code Enforcement Department in Tarpon Springs stating that someone filed a complaint against Airbnb rentals. I discovered that the complainant was someone who lives over two miles from my residence. My home and approximately 15 other homes were targeted by this individual. We were initially told by the Code Enforcement people that we could not rent our apartments out any longer for any less than six months. Later, we received an amended letter stating the minimum amount of time we could rent our property out was six weeks. If we did not comply with the Code Enforcement, we could be fined up to $250 per day. I have been in contact with the Code Enforcement, Planning and Zoning, the mayor, the city manager, my state representative, and several Tarpon commissioners. Many of those I spoke to agreed that the codes are archaic and need to be changed. According to the Planning and Zoning Department, these codes were adopted in the 1990s, way before we had any companies like Airbnb, Uber, TripAdvisor, HomeAway, Vacation Rentals, et cetera. This existing code is a violation, in my opinion, of my rights as an American to responsibly rent out my property as I see fit. In fact, there is a bill in the House, HB 987, making its way through the Senate, addressing this very issue. As I stated before, my wife and I depend on this income to supplement our social security. Forcing us to rent our apartments out of- out for a minimum, a max- a max- minimum of six weeks would seriously impact our income and the ability to stay in our home. There are many advantages for the City of Tarpon Springs and the merchants in our city. Airbnb pays a 13% tax from our rentals. The merchants in Tarpon Springs and the surrounding area benefit because people who are here short-term do not generally cook their meals at home. They visit the many fine restaurants in our city and spend a lot of money in the shops downtown and at the docks. Full-time tenants simply do not spend that kind of money. We attract and host many people from all over the world, giving them an attractive, comfortable, well-equipped, friendly place to stay during their vacation. Property values increase because homeowners who rent out using Airbnb have to maintain their properties to a high standard if they desire to get quality reviews from their guests. We personally have received hundreds of five-star reviews that promote our city. Because of their positive experience, these people go home and tell their friends about our beautiful city and all that it has to offer. Although it has not happened at our home, I understand that there can be, and in fact has been, a few bad experiences with people who rent short-term through Airbnb or other venues. However, even long-term renters have caused problems in neighborhoods. My contention and argument is that with short-term renters who cause trouble, they will be there for a few nights compared to long-term renters who cause trouble, stay for years, and can be very difficult to evict. Last week, I was able to meet the person who sent the email code to Code Enforcement complaining about my property. We had a very productive conversation, and she informed me that she had never targeted my property. She had any complaints about my property. Her and her neighbors have an issue with one of the- one Airbnb rental in their neighborhood. They went online to see of others who rent on Airbnb, and it turned- it turned in a list of 15 addresses over- over to the Code Enforcement people. Mine just happened to be one of them. After meeting with her, she was very apologetic about involving me with her neighborhood issues. She told me she was going to call- contact Code Enforcement and withdraw her complaint concerning our property. We parted on very, very positive terms, and I contend that this is how neighbors should handle any disagreements that they have. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to comment here.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. Mayor, it's two minutes. Is that right?
Four minutes.
Four minutes, okay. I think I'm good. I've written it down, so it should be right at four minutes. Good evening. My name is Coast of Addy Kiotis, and I reside at 538 West Cedar Street, Tarpon Springs, Florida. I'm here to proudly announce to you and the residents of this great City of Tarpon Springs that I'm a candidate for City Commissioner's Seat Two. I know my candidacy seems a bit early, but I'm doing this now to have legitimacy in seeking information and sharing ideas. As you know professionally, I have an engineering and environmental background. I've been city manager, city engineer, and the building official. Also, like the mayor, I'm retired, which will allow me to be a full-time city commissioner. My reason for running is to bring fresh ideas and experience to the board. For example, one change that I would like to see is to adopt a policy of being proactive as caretakers of public property and services to the community. It's actually a change in mindset. The one thing that the library, cultural center, city hall, the seawall at Craig Park, the river dredging, and the Sun Bay Motel all had in common is we waited too long to address their issues before they became problems. As a current example of where being proactive can avoid problems or delays is the hospital's emergency stoplight for the new emergency room. One will be needed. We should lay the groundwork now and offer to help the hospital to obtain approvals while we have our own represent- representative on the NPO PPC rather than waiting until the shared seat rotates to Safety Harbor or Oldsmore. Another policy change that prevents problems is to ensure residents are more involved in understanding major public projects, including obtaining residents' feedback before project implementation. I find it ironic that we go door-to-door telling residents about ourselves and seeking their votes, yet when a project becomes unpopular after it's completed, the typical reason is that public discussion for the project was advertised, but residents did not come to the meeting. I wish to see the city to be proactive here as well. If residents do not come to hear the public discussion, neighborhood meetings should take place to make certain that residents of the neighborhood understand the project and voice any concerns before groundbreaking. The best example where this process could have saved a great deal of angst was the placement of riprap along South Spring Boulevard. Actually showing residents what to expect and hearing their comments then instead of how- now would have avoided this problem. Lastly, I feel very strongly that a much more aggressive economic development effort and plan is needed for our downtown and sponge docks. We have very successful and smart businessmen and women in this town. They have excellent ideas, yet we frustrate them by ignoring their advice. I've seen this firsthand. As we did for the strategic plan of the early 90s where local businessmen and women, along with the city staff, developed an economic roadmap and vision for the city, we need to do the same now. We are enjoying an excellent economy, yet we are missing out on so much. Of course, there are other projects for which I wished- for which I wish to be directly involved. These are the river dredging, bike trails for the beaches and schools, and replacing the riprap along Spring Boulevard with a sidewalk. New projects would be a master plan for Craig Park, an environmental study of Spring Bayou, and a structural analysis of the sponge docks for Sponge Dock Seawall. I have reasons for all of these, but it would be too lengthy to go into those now. I have many more ideas, certainly too many to share with you this evening. So Mayor Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. I look forward to discussing these ideas and others in great detail with you in the future.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public comments? Here now, thank you very much. We're now going to the Proclamation's item number one, Municipal Clerks Week. Proclamation reads, "The City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation, whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time, honor, and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas the residents of the City of Tarpon Springs recognize the essential roles of the city clerk and deputy city clerk play in our local government, and whereas the mayor and commissioners command the city clerk, Ibrin Jacobs, and the deputy city clerk, Michelle Manusus, for demonstrating outstanding service and commitment to our municipality and to our community, and whereas it is the most appropriate to recognize the accomplishment of the office of the city clerk and extend appreciation to our city clerk, Ibrin Jacobs, deputy city clerk, Michelle Manusus, and the office staff for the vital service they perform and their dedication to the City of Tarpon Springs. And now therefore, I Chris LaHoozis, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2019, as the 50-year anniversary of Municipal Clerks Week. And I will thank you for everything you do." Are there any commission comments? Yeah. Well, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank and to congratulate Ms. Jacobs and Ms. Manusus for the services they provide to the people of Tarpon Springs, especially to us on the Board of Commissions. Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, thank you. And we're now going to item number two, which is the National Day of Prayer. Commissioner Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. The proclamation reads, "City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation, whereas we come together on our National Day of Prayer as one nation to show gratitude for our many blessings, discover peace, and to give thanks, and whereas every day, women and men use the wisdom gained from humble prayer to speak kindness and to make our world a better place, and whereas through prayer, we often gain the insight to learn from our mistakes, the motivation to always be better, and the courage to stand up for what is right even when it is not popular, and whereas on this day, may our faiths enable us to sow the seeds of progress in our ever-changing world, and whereas it is fitting and proper to give thanks by observing a day of prayer in the City of Tarpon Springs while recognizing the need for strengthening religious and moral values in our city, state, and nation. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Connor Donovan, by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim May 2nd, 2019, as the National Day of Prayer. And it will be accepted by Major Ted Morris."
Any commission comments?
Yeah.
Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, thank you. The next item is another proclamation for Drinking Water Week. Vice Mayor Terri Paney.
Thank you. "City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation, whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy, and whereas any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some ways related to access to safe water, and whereas all other stu- we are all stewards of water and infrastructure upon which future generations depend, and whereas- whereas each citizen of our city is called upon to help protect our- protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. Now therefore, I, Vice Mayor Townsend Terri Paney, by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 5th to May 11th, 2019, as Drinking Water Week. And this will be accepted by Paul Smith."
My fellow commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, today we also received an outstanding water treatment plan award for our reverse osmosis facilities. This is the second time that we're receiving this award. The first one was 2016, and this one today for 2018. We receive this outstanding award because the excellent operation that we have, based on the Amane's professionalism, safety, emergency preparedness, and public relation. Mr. Lee Curris, if you please, and Mr. Paul, if you please, express my appreciation, our appreciation, to the staff and everybody involved. And the- the award says, "American Water Works Association Product Section Outstanding Class B Water Treatment Plan, City of Tarpon Springs, RO Facility, 2018." And congratulations. This is... Yes. Can we all go around, take a picture?
Good evening, Paul Smith, Public Services Director, and thank you very much for that. With me here tonight is Raymond Page, Utility Superintendent. To my right and to my left is Hillary Weber, our Water Division Manager. Drinking Water Week is an opportunity for both water professionals and the communities they serve to join together and recognize the vital role of water in our daily lives. The 2019 celebration takes place on May 5th through 11th. And some of the ways the city is participating in this is a few things. One is the award that we're the recipient of, and as the mayor summarized, it was by application. And I want to thank staff for having the foresight to do that. It was the second time we've won the award, and I just want to say for us to demonstrate excellence in all of these categories takes a dedicated and skilled staff, of which I'm very proud, and I want to thank them very much. And this is our operators, our maintenance staff. There's all sorts of support and skills and talent that go into that. The second item is performing or promoting the benefits of having our own public water supply with a public information brochure. And we're going to be distributing that in the utility bills starting in May, so it's going to sort of correspond with this Drinking Water Week. The idea to promote public awareness of our water system has been brought forward by Commissioner Carr in the past, and most recently by Commissioner Donovan. And with those thoughts, this brochure was prepared. And the brochure includes photos of the process, reason why it's important to be a self-supplier of water, highlights of the treatment system, water quality parameters of interest like hardness, which is the mineral content in the water, which we're able to make much lower with the RO facility. There's frequently asked questions and contact information. We also plan to put this on our website as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to also express, as Paul said, this goes way beyond the three people standing up here. It's the board's support through all of our budget process. It's Mark's leadership for staff. And it's also all the other departments within the city that we really don't see, and you can't recognize this, but all of the city departments are part of winning an award like this. And I really want to express my personal appreciation for having an opportunity to work with the city on such an award of this nature. A small town like this, this is really a phenomenal achievement. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is another proclamation, National Arbor Day. Commissioner Carr?
Proclamation of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that the special day be set aside for planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the whole world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community, and whereas trees in our commu- excuse me, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Jacob Carr, by the virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim that April 26, 2019, the last Friday of April, National Arbor Day. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and to promote all- excuse me, to promote the well-being of this and future generations. This is going to be accepted by Kevin Powell, our building director, and Shannon... Your last- I can't read it. I'm sorry. Shannon, our Arborist. Sorry, I can't read your last name. Sorry, I can't read your last name.
You guys will take a couple.
I would like to say thank you. Sorry. I would like to say thank you to the mayor and the Board of Commissioners for renewing the city's commitment to Tarpon Springs Urban Forest. The last time I was here, I told you about Project Learning Tree Workshop. I would be pleased to say that 33 new educators were certified as instructors. A flyer and a picture from the workshop should have been included in your packet tonight. The next event of note is Eco Teacher Training Week. The workshop is June 24th through 28th at Booker Creek Preserve. Using local and state and national curricula correlated with the Florida standards, participants will be given activities and resources to help foster environmental knowledge and good environmental stewardship in their students. The next event will be Teens in Trees. The city of Largo, Pinellas County Public Works, University of Florida IFAS Extension, and I are currently collaborating a host to three-day workshop for high school students to show them various aspects and types of jobs available within the urban forest. It will be held at Booker Creek Preserve July 22nd and 24th. Finally, the city will have another tree giveaway held in conjunction with Eco Fest. Tarpon Springs residents will be allowed to take home two native three-gallon trees. Also that day, I will display the Traveling Tree Walk signs. They look like price tags showing the value of each tree gives to our community. Again, thank you for your support, and have a good evening.
Good evening, Kevin Powell, Building Development Director. Um, I want to thank Shannon. She's very passionate about, um, her job here as the arborist in trees, uh, what she, she tries to put out there in educating people. Um, I know she has a, a difficult time seeing a tree, uh, that has to go, uh, but sometime, you know, she does understand. Uh, she's really brought a passion into our office for it, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate her, uh, changing a lot of my viewpoints when it comes to, to trees and, uh, where they should be at and, um, how we should, should treat them. So I, I'd like to thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next proclamation is Earth Day, Commissioner Donovan.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation reads, "Whereas all species play a unique role in the complex web of life and contribute to the ecosystem services on which all life on earth depends. And hence, protecting our species is crucial to the survival of this planet. And whereas it is necessary for the citizens of our global community to develop green jobs and to build an innovative and equitable green economy to combat global changes. And whereas the youth of the world are our most valuable resource and represent a source of endless creativity and potential. And whereas expanding environmental education and climate literacy is vital to enhance awareness. And whereas it is more important now than ever to cooperate locally and internationally to defend the environmental progress that has been gained. And whereas Earth Day is an annual reminder of the constant need for environmental activism, stewardship commitments, and sustainability efforts. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Connor Donovan, by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the city of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2019 as Earth Day. And this will be mailed to be accepted."
Are there any commission comments? Any public comments on this item? Here now, thank you. We are now going to the presentation, item number six. Uh, fiscal year 2018 audit presentation, Moore, Stephens, and Lovelace.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Ron Herring, Finance Director. Tonight, we have the presentation of the city's external audit. State statute 21839 requires local governments have an annual financial audit performed by an independent certified public accountant within nine months of the fiscal year end. The city's audit can be found on the city, can be found on the city's website under the Finance Department. The firm of Moore, Stephens, Lovelace was retained by the city to perform this audit. Tonight, we have Jeff Wolf Audit, Jeff Wolf Audit Manager with Moore, Stephens, Lovelace to present the city's audit. I'll give you Jeff here.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to thank the mayor and the city commission for allowing us to serve you as your external auditors. Um, you all should have received, um, as part of the packet, required communication letter. Um, this is a letter that governmental auditing standard requires us to communicate to governance. Um, and since you've already received it, and there's no significant items to report, um, I'm just gonna skip it, but if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those. Um, just moving on to the reports, the Independent Auditors Report, which is our report on the fairness of the financial statements. We had an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, the best opinion you can have. Um, our next report is a report on internal control and compliance and, and other matters. Um, again, we had no findings or deficiencies noted. Um, you're gonna know a, a common pattern here with these reports. Um, your next report is your state required auditor general management letter. Um, again, that was a clean report with no findings or issues noted. Lastly, is our independence report on compliance with Florida statutes on investment compliance. And again, we had no findings noted. Moving on to some very high-level financial highlights. Um, your general fund, which is your main operating fund of the city, was pretty comparable to last year. Assets were 15.3 million, up 0.2 million compared to last year. Total liabilities were 1.1 million, down 0.2 million from last year, which results in a total fund balance of 14.2 million. And of that amount, 8.8 million is unrestricted and available for future expenditures. Um, you're not changing fund balance with 0.4 million, which is a 1.3 million increase from prior year. And really, the most significant, um, number on this page is your unassigned fund balance as percentage of total expenditures. Um, that is a 36, almost 37%. Um, really, that shows your ability to meet your future expenditures through reserves if, um, unexpected event would occur. So that's a very strong number. Just some general fund budget comparisons. Um, your total revenues exceeded budget by 0.6 million, and your total expenditures were under budget by 0.9 million, which resulted in a favorable variance of 1.5 million compared to budget. Next, your enterprise funds. Um, your sanitation fund is probably the first, is the only one that really kind of sticks out and is a little bit unusual. Um, you had a, an operating loss of 1.1 million and a total change in that position, a decrease of 1.3 million. But the key thing to note there, that is really debris removal for Hurricane Irma, which you will be reimbursed almost all of that money. So this is kind of a, an outlier, and, and that fund will be made whole once FEMA starts making payments, whenever that is. Um, your water and sewer fund, again, um, had positive results comparable to last year, and overall operating, uh, income of 3.5 million. So again, strong financial numbers. Um, in closing, it was a very, it was a very clean audit, um, very strong financials for the city, and just a job well done. But at this point, if there's any questions or comments on the audit's financials, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Well, I want to thank you for the report. As the report indicates, that the city's financials are in good shape. And you also indicated that, um, our emergency fund is 36.6%, which is very healthy. Uh, do you, uh, do you have any recommendations for us? I know you didn't find any deficiencies, but do you have anything that it's always going to be room for improvement, anything that you can help us with?
Well, I mean, we generally have communications throughout the audit and throughout the year with general recommendations. But nothing really that meets formal, um, communication to, to the board. But, um, Ron and I constantly discuss, you know, questions or recommendations throughout the audit. But overall, I mean, the city is, is looking very strong.
Thank you. Mr. Lee Curris, our congratulations to our Finance Department, the next one. Thank you. Any other comments? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for your presentation. Um, looking at page B22, um, where it says total revenues and transfers in. Budget was 23.9, and the actual is 24 and a half million, difference of $600,000. Based on your audit, what, where do you see this increase in revenue the most?
Do you have that information?
I'd have to look at the CAFR. It's, um, should be isolated on that page in the CAFR.
Is it B21?
Uh, B22. There's just an increase in the general fund. The most significant is intergovernmental revenue, um, so money from Hurricane Irma, 313,000. So yeah, we've been hurricane reimbursement for Irma in the general fund.
And then there's an, an additional 300 or so?
Yeah, we had about, we had the tree bank came in well, about 92,000 over budget. Um, ticket sales came in over budget, about 69,000. Franchise fee, about 45,000, and revenue sharing, about 39,000.
Okay. And what was the cost of the audit, Mr. Herring?
Uh, the cost of the audit is 43,000.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I've got a quick question for you. I'm assuming you do other governments. Uh, what do you typically see a unassigned fund or emergency fund percentage of the budget? Uh, you mentioned that the city of Tarpon Springs is around 36 to 37%. What do you see in other, uh, communities?
Um, it's a, it's, that's a comparable amount. We always try to see, you know, at least 20%, but we, we really say that's a bare minimum, especially with hurricanes, you know, you like to have that extra fund balance. Um, there's actually a really good, um, the Florida, the Auditor General does a comparison of, like, cities by population, by taxable property value. It actually puts that information in a peer group. Um, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I'd be more than happy to share that with you. That really has comparison of other cities of your size and, um, population. But I would, but overall, a short answer, you're, you're, you're comparable with other cities, probably slightly better than, than most, which is a good place to be in.
Yeah, if you could share that, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Donovan, you have a comment?
Uh, no, my only clarification was for the $43,000. Is that the cost of, um, your services for the year? Or is it just for putting together this specific audit?
It's, it's, it's the audit for the whole year, which includes, you know, our, our field work at year end, interim. But also, um, it's all year round. I mean, if we don't charge anything extra for any questions, or we do, we also do a free CP for staff too as well. But, um, that's just, that's the fee for everything.
Okay, thank you.
Within the scope of the contract.
Okay. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now going to, uh, item number seven, which is Pinellas County Beckett Bridge Project Update.
Mr. Mayor? You ready?
Go ahead, sure.
Okay. So I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. And I'm here tonight to introduce a presentation from Pinellas County staff on the status of the Beckett Bridge Replacement Project. They will also present a proposed concept to allow construction of sidewalks on both sides of the roadway, on both sides of the bridge. Um, as a presentation, this is, of course, a discussion item, and the county's looking for the board's feedback on their, on their concept. Um, and as a Pinellas County project, it is there right away, but, uh, the city remains closely involved in helping to make the county's project a success. Um, Karen Lemons and others have been involved in the aesthetics review committee. Our Public Works Department has provided feedback on roadway and stormwater design. And the Public Services Department has been involved by addressing city water and wastewater utilities that will be impacted by the new bridge. Uh, and I'm involved in helping coordinate things however I can. Here tonight, um, from Pinellas County's Public Works Department, part of their design team, Greg Cotrone, Manager of Transportation Engineering Services, is here. Tom Washburn, Manager of Traffic Engineering Section. And Aaron Lawson, Senior Roadway Transportation Engineer in the Transportation Engineering Section. And you thought my title was long. Sorry, Aaron. And this is Aaron Lawson.
Hi, good evening, thank you. I just wanted to, uh, give you a brief update on the status of the project. I am the project manager in the Public Works Transportation Division for Pinellas County. And also, as Bob said, to present, uh, consideration that the county is looking to acquire 15-foot of right-of-way on the southwest side of the bridge. This acquisition would, um, provide many benefits for the project, for the city, and most importantly, it would be safety, um, a safety enhancement to the project and to the bridge. So, the project is currently at 90% design. Uh, we just, we just had a 90% design review meeting on it, which the city has been involved with throughout this whole design phase, as Bob mentioned. Um, and as, as you know, we have also gone through and completed successfully a PD&E study several years ago, which, again, the city did have input on, and we went out and we did public workshops to get input from the citizens. That being said, the bridge, the existing bridge, is listed in the National Register of Historic Places for its engineer significance. Uh, it's a Scherzer rolling lift-type bascule bridge, and, um, and that's, I, I believe there's one of nine left in the country. So, uh, it, its significance is the engineering. In order to replace this bridge, we did go in, into memorandum of agreement between the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, and the Florida State Historic Preservation Office. And, uh, that memorandum, um, requires us to have an aesthetic committee, which Bob mentioned, and we have several people have, that have been involved in that, including, um, representatives from the city, from the state, and from the county. We've had four meetings, we've come up with a conceptual design. Well, this, this is a, a rendering of what the design is, is going to be for the new bridge. And that's what's up on the screen now. You'd like to see what your, your bridge is going to look like in a few years. Um, we will, we will go out again to the public and present this concept and garner some feedback from that. Uh, we want to wait until we have all the right-of-way issues resolved and, and we have a more, um, solid construction schedule. That being said, I want to jump into, um, our right-of-way issue. We... We do have some constrained right-of-way on the west side of the bridge. We have 40 feet of right-of-way. Uh, and then on the east side, we have 50 foot of right-of-way. So, our bridge is gonna, is gonna be constructed to allow a, a total width that would allow a, um, sidewalk and a bike lane. Unfortunately, because of the constrained right-of-way on the west side of the bridge, the sidewalk and the bike lane will not be able to continue across the bridge. Um, we will have it shut down so that it's only access for operators on the south side. That, that being said, we are, are considering a 15-foot right-of-way take on the south side. It's one property owner. It's the Bay Shore Homes, Bay Shore Mobile Home RV Park. And we had our consultant, HGR, do a, an acquisition estimate. As I said, 15-foot. Let me go ahead and show you. This is, this is an aerial image of it. We have shown in red that 15-foot take. It would affect 16 mobile homes and one RV pad site and their fence. They have a fence that's right along the right-of-way line, adjacent to the roadway. So, the analysis looked at acquisition estimate and included tenant and owner relocations for the mobile homes. It would include legal fees, business damages, and the cost of the land. And the total estimate, and, and as I said, this is an estimate, and so it could change, you know, as they get into negotiations if we were to move forward, is 1.5 million dollars. Um, and so this is, as Bob said, uh, as our partner, we would like to get input from the city on, on this potential acquisition. And I do also want to point out that regardless of if this 15-foot is pursued, we will need five-foot of temporary easement on all corners of the bridge in order to build the bridge. Well, we have a, a wall, you know, leading up to the bridge, and so we're gonna be able to, um, we're gonna need to have room to construct that. And that, that's also shown on this mop. It's a little bit harder to see, but it's in the, in the, um, the black. Now, some of the benefits of, of this 15-feet is, like I said, it's gonna allow the bike lanes and sidewalks to go all the way across the- it's gonna allow the bike lanes and sidewalks to go all the way across the entire length of the project. It's gonna create a safer work zone, and it will allow for better maintenance of traffic or driveway access for the property owners within the project limits. It's going to also provide us an opportunity to shift the mobile home parks driveway to the west, and that's gonna allow a safer access point because the bridge is gonna be a higher elevation. The proposed bridge will be higher, the profile will be higher, and, and that'll allow us to scoot it back and get it a little bit more at grade. It'll also benefit our utility, utility relocations. Within very tight right-of-way, it's gonna be hard for us to place the utility poles. They're gonna be right at the, the right-of-way line, right behind the back of curb. Also, as Bob mentioned, we, we do have a joint project agreement with the city for the water and sewer subaquas lines to be relocated so that they are not in the footprint of the new bridge. And so this will give another opportunity for, for, for them to be placed on the south side or the north side. Like I said, the, the five-foot temporary construction easement is gonna be needed regardless, and we really are just looking for some feedback from the city before we pursue moving forward with this. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the update. This is a project that we've been waiting for a long time. We know that the bridge is old, and it's also a safety concern. I've got a couple of questions to ask you. You say that nine percent of the design is completed. When do you see the whole design to be completed?
Well, that's gonna, we have, we have a schedule right now to have the total design complete in July. Of course, depending on this right-of-way acquisition, it could delay us a little bit if we have to negotiate or... It, it's just unknown how long the right-of-way acquisition will take.
You had some neighborhood meeting, which was very beneficial to people of the area. They are very pleased with that. Are you planning to have some of that, as we had at the Y Club a couple times?
Yes, sir. We, we will be having another public information meeting. As I said, I would like to wait until we have the right-of-way issues resolved before we go out and present it to the public. And also, I would like to be able to tell them for sure when construction's gonna be, be starting.
My last question is, with this project, the city has to relocate some of the utility lines?
Correct.
Is going to be included into the county capital improvement budget? In other words, the county will be paid for the expenses?
Not for the city's relocations.
No?
No, sir. We do have...
Even though it's part of the project?
I'm sorry?
It's part of the project.
Yes. It will be bid as part of the project.
It will not be reimbursed?
No, sir.
Okay.
It's, they, the city and the county have, have gone into agreement together. It's called a joint project agreement.
Okay. And you're also gonna make provisions for temporary service when, during the construction for the utilities? In other words, you're gonna have some kind of a flexible pipe or something?
There, there will be service throughout, correct. The contractors will build it in such a way that there will be service.
Thank you. Commissioner Dove?
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you all, both, for your presentation. Do have a couple of questions. Bob, if I can start with you. There's mention in the backup regarding the stormwater being reworked, I guess, at the base of the bridge. Could you give a little detail on, on how that will be designed? I'm assuming the stormwater will go right into the river, and there won't be any holding areas. Is that right?
Well, the stormwater that runoff from the bridge itself will be captured in a, in a collection system, and it will be channeled back into the river. But the stormwater work that's being done on the west side, where we have the major drainage problem at Chesapeake, that's gonna be collected and conveyed to the west, to the bayou.
Okay. And then, I guess, at ninety percent completion of the plans, this fifteen feet is relatively new to the discussion? Is that right?
Yes, it is. It was, it was brought up during the design, and, and it's been... We really don't like to build a non-complete typical section. We want to keep the typical section as much as possible throughout the entire project. And unfortunately, when we realized that we're tight on right-of-way, we had to make some concessions, and cutting the sidewalk and the bike lane were the best way to do that without acquiring a right-of-way. But that being said, we do want to look into the possibility and the option because it will provide, you know, a safer facility, and it'll allow access for multimodal, for bicycles, for pedestrians.
And in the event you can't come to terms with the property owner, we just do without the one bike lane and pedestrian sidewalk?
Correct. And as I stated, the bridge will be built to accommodate that. So should that property be acquired sometime in the future, then the roadway could be expanded, and the bridge would be open to bicycles and pedestrians on the south side.
In the backup, it says that the staff would propose including the acquisition costs, or county, county staff would include the acquisition costs of the right-of-way?
Correct. It would be included in our capital improvement plan.
Gotcha. And how are the negotiations going so far?
We have not begun those. We are just at the very beginning stages and just seeking input from our upper management and from the city. You know, we're being, opening up our partnerships.
Gotcha. I think you said the estimates right now are, say, in a million and a half for that piece of right-of-way?
Yes.
And how did you arrive at that number?
Our consultant did a, they did a study. They, they looked at current trends, I guess, in, in the land, and they... The cost of cures, right? So, you know, the...
Cost of what?
Cost to cure.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you.
The mobile homes, the relocation costs, the, the fence, you know, items such as that.
Gotcha.
Property value. Yeah, and also, like I said, that does include legal fees.
Right.
Because we would be, we would have to cover their legal fees as well as our legal fees, and, and then any relocations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Lawson, thank you for coming to the, before the board and presenting. Also, thank you, Mr. Washburn, for being here. I'm sorry, I forgot the other individual's name. I did not. But thank you for being here as well. Bob, also, thanks for the, the update on this. This is a, obviously, a project you all have been working on for many years. I find this very encouraging from a city commissioner's standpoint that the county is interested in acquiring that if the board feels that's what we would recommend. I would strongly recommend the board that we make that recommendation to the county to do this because, as you all know, I've been very passionate about pedestrian safety, bicyclist safety around the bayous, since I've been on the board for about two years now. This would really address that area of need. Right now, there's not a complete sidewalk around the bayou, and this would help fill part of the completion of the need of this area. Growing up in Tarpon Springs, I rode my bicycle around Tarpon many times from the downtown out to the beaches. And I've ridden over this bridge probably thousands of times in my truck. This bridge was also featured on Dolphin Tale. I'm sure some of us have watched Dolphin Tale. But in the movie, it portrays it as a, basically a back, backroads bridge, right? It's the, the young child is going over the bridge very nonchalantly. In reality, this bridge is very dangerous. You're doing your best to race to the top, hoping that there's not a car coming from the other side, so you can see on the other side to see if a car is coming. And then as you're looking forward, you're trying to look behind you also because there's cars racing up behind you as well. And our current bridge doesn't have enough room even to walk your bicycle in the pedestrian path. So, with that, I find that this is a complete safety concern and a way to address the safety for multiple individuals. You've got the safety of the bicyclists, the safety of the walkers, pedestrians, the runners. We know there's a lot of people that walk this area. If you drive this area, you see it constantly. You also have the safety of the drivers. So if a driver were to hit a pedestrian or bicyclist, typically that person goes into the windshield and could affect the driver as well. And lastly, I want to talk about the safety of the people that are actually living in these homes and within the park. These homes go right up to the road, probably within like eight feet of the road. If you had a stray car that were to veer off riverside and go into the park, it would crush that home as well, and potentially somebody in the home. So, we're looking at improving the safety amongst a ton of different areas here if we move forward and make the recommendation. So, one point five million dollars is a significant amount of money, but I am happy to hear that the county would be rolling that into their capital expenditure. And I think it's an area that we strongly recommend and encourage the county to move forward to acquire this land, to improve the safety and also the, the travel accessibility of pedestrians in this community of Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming, and again, I'm encouraged as well that the county's taken interest in this. I just have several questions for you. How long, I mean, I know you're ninety percent done, but how long do you expect the actual construction to take?
Construction, well, I can tell you this. I'm not sure exact the duration, but we will be doing a full detour during the construction, and it's gonna be about a year. So it'll be about a year long of bridge closure.
Okay. About a year. Do you know what season, like, what season it's starting in?
That we haven't ironed out yet. You know, it might be beneficial to look at that and try to avoid peak season. Maybe instead of, instead of doing two peak seasons in such, build it in such a way that we're only impacting one peak season.
Okay. Yeah, my, actually, my concern was more as far as like weather goes. I've, you know, born and raised here, twenty-two years old, and that area around the bayou in particular is, in my opinion, the biggest problem when it comes to flooding in our city. I mean, I can't go down that road if it's high tide and it's been raining in the summer. We, I mean, it's every single day that that road's flooded. So I was just worried about maybe construction getting just completely washed out a couple times because it floods so, so bad around the bayou. That kind of leads me to my next point, is that, I mean, we have an opportunity to fix an area possibly that has been flooding for thirty years, and we haven't done anything about it. So I, I would like to see, maybe if while this is going on, we can also look at fixing some of the flooding around the bayou there, especially just to the left, if you're looking at that, as it keeps going down Chesapeake. I, I, is there any option, or is there any way that we can work on flooding?
You, you will be happy to know that we are concurrently doing a design project west of the bridge, from Chesapeake, down around the corner to the bend. And, and that is what we're planning to do as it goes with projects. So that project would be built concurrently with the bridge. And that would, that is, that is solely a drainage, a stormwater improvement project.
Okay. So that would be happening simultaneously?
Correct.
And where are we with that?
That, that's currently at sixty percent. That one got started a little bit later, but it's, we've got plenty of time to catch it up. And so it will be at final plans at the same time the bridge is. And they'll be, they'll be bid together, like I said, so it'll be all under one contract.
Okay. And then I know you said you had hold, you had held some resident workshops for, for just the neighborhood. Have you actually contacted the residents that would have to be physically moved? Like, have you like knocked on their door, put a slip in their mail, or something like that?
Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but during the PDNE, I believe that there were surveys and information sent out to those residents.
During the PER phase, or the PDNE phase, we actually sent out flyers and communicated that way, as well as put it on our website, sent out advertisements, put it through social media, and had quite a turnout. So we, we conducted several workshops during the PDNE study. For our public outreach for, for this, the design project, we do intend on following up with that. But as Aaron mentioned earlier, we'd really like to iron out the right-of-way issues first before we proceed to show them, okay, this is the design, this is the construction duration, these are the potential impacts.
All right. And do we, do we know, do we have any access to any design or anything like that of what you guys are doing for the flooding? I know you said just stormwater work. Just 'cause I, I'd like to know specifically what the plan is, or is that not available yet?
Yes, we have shared it with the city. Bob and his staff have reviewed it and been part of... They've gone to all of our, our meetings. And, and I was also told, staff was very happy to know that we did put in our design the tide flex at the outfalls.
Okay, awesome, yeah. I just want to make sure we cover it, 'cause that, I mean, whatever it takes to get flooding down there fixed while we're already doing this, I'm all for it. Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner, I'll just add, I'm more excited about the stormwater project than I am the bridge, honestly. I mean, it needs it so bad there. And I was very excited to see the tide flex check valves coming in, not only on the west side, but on the east side, and on, coming out from the bridge as well. So they're really being proactive on the stormwater design.
Mayor? Thank you again.
I have one other question. Is there, do you know how many permanent residents would be impacted by this? If this were to move forward, are you aware of a number?
Are you referring to the...
The homes.
Mobile home park?
Yeah, so I don't know if they're all permanent residents, or if they're seasonal, or if they're some temporary. You were...
Yeah, that is a good question, and I don't know the answer to that either. I think that would be something we would have to find out as we got more into the discussion.
Okay, thanks. Didn't we discuss that in one of the meetings?
We had thought preliminary that there would be, there were, I think, four residents, and the rest of them were rentals.
Okay.
As far as, you know, permanent, I think that was kind of the preliminary number, but of course, they'd have to go confirm that and stuff. But there was a portion of them that are, I think the larger majority of them were rentals than actually homesteads.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks again, Ms. Lawson.
Thank you. We're now going to the public comments on this item. Are there any public comments on this item? Anyone who has questions to ask? Nothing? Well, thank you very, very much. This is very important project to all of us.
Mayor, can I, was there clarity from the board or consensus on where we would like the county to go with this? I know I was pretty passionate about it. I just want to make sure that we're clear before we all wrap up, if the board is supportive of acquiring the property and looking at it from the county's perspective, since they're covering on their capital side?
They're already going to look for it, I mean, to negotiate.
I understand it's a presentation, but they're asking for feedback on our end. If the city, at the beginning of the presentation, she asked for feedback from the board. I just want to make sure that we give them the correct feedback that they're looking for, and that it seemed like we're all on the, on the right page. Am I correct in saying that we want to see the county move forward with that?
Are you looking for input on the acquiring the fifteen feet? Is that what you're asking for that?
Yes. I would appreciate any feedback you are willing to give me.
Okay, so it's clear? I just want to make sure that we're clear. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now going to the concerned agenda. Item number eight is the satisfaction of release of liens. Number nine is the attorney fees. A is Traska Dyno invoice fifty-seven, nine fifty-seven. B is Johnson and Jackson invoice forty-two, forty-one, and forty-two, forty-two. Number ten is a special events. Eight is nineteen, the islands made eighteen, and June twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen. B is the Special Olympics, Florida, June fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Eleven is to renew the file, number eighteen zero zero, zero twenty-seven dash C dash R S, Police Equipment Surveillance, I T Supplies and Related Items through the Purchasing Cooperative of American, contract number R F P three dash one forty dash sixteen. Number twelve is the award file, number nineteen zero zero ninety-four N J L, Single Source Purchase of Apparatus Mountain Exhaust Capture System. Number thirteen is to approve an increase to file number eighteen zero one seventy-four N C M, Single Source Purchase of Dodge O E M Parts and Services. Number fourteen is the award file, number nineteen zero one zero four C J J, Landscape Service, Services Utility City of St. Petersburg, R F Q, number seventy-one sixty-four. Number fifteen is the award file, number nineteen zero zero forty-eight N J L, Single Source Purchase of Granite NET Asset Inspection and Design Support Software. Number sixteen is to rediffy the increase to file numbers eighteen zero one zero six N R S, Single Source Purchase of Corrosion Inhibitor. Number seventeen is the award file, number nineteen zero one zero five C J L, Sodium Hydroxide Through the City of Boyton, Bid number zero fifteen twenty-eight twenty-one dash nineteen T T. And the last one, eighteen, is the award file, number nineteen zero one zero... And the last one, eighteen, is the award file, number nineteen zero one zero six NJL, single source purchase of uh cow flow line system part service and chemicals. Any of the items that you like to pull?
Fourteen.
Fourteen?
Ten A.
Ten A? Okay. Any uh commissioner comments on the items except ten A fourteen? Are there any public comments on this item? Items? I need a motion?
Move to approved.
And roll call please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarepani?
Yes.
Merrill, who is this?
Yes. We go to the special event, number ten A, Islands Night in the Islands, this is from May eighteen and June twenty-ninth.
Uh, yeah, sorry, this has already been addressed like way in the past, but I was just curious, 'cause I'm, I'm an insurance nerd, for those of you that don't know, I'm an insurance agent. Um, I just noticed on the application, they did not have a certificate of insurance attached, so I just wanna know who is liable if there's an accident or God forbid, somebody gets hurt at night at the islands. Um, 'cause if you look on the application, go to page two, uh, right in the middle there, above the bottom portion, it says, is the certificate of insurance attached? And they checked off no, if not, when will it be sent? And they just left it blank. Um, so I just wanna know if there was any uh event insurance or if we're covered um legally, God forbid, you know, something happens or somebody gets hurt.
This event for these two things are co-sponsored by the city. So that's the difference, as you see with, with, with some of the other ones, as you know, we used to do it under cultural affairs, under grants, we had these announced. Um, so they took over, uh, the merchants took over running that are doing these last two that are covered for us as a joint one with the city, so that's why you see the difference of this one.
Okay, but there's still no event insurance for it? I'm, I'm sorry.
Yes, it'd be the ci- yes, the cities.
Okay.
I'm correct? I got the one right or I got a different one?
Would you please state your name and address, please?
Hi, good evening, I'm Carol Roger guess, I'm the Tarpon Springs Merchants Association Event Coordinator. And, do you want my address? Okay, um, yes, to answer your question, the merchants has insurance for every one of our events that are listed on um our postcard. Um, so we will take out insurance, plus the city will have insurance for Night in the Islands.
Okay, but there's no certificate of insurance?
Yes, there will be.
Okay.
It's just, we don't turn them in until, like a week before.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
No, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Sent you there on the podium, this is the first time that we have the Merchants Association to be involved with this event, can you tell us how you're gonna do it?
Um, well, actually, last year, we co-sponsored and we provided a band so that the event would extend to Roosevelt. Um, and so this year, um, we will continue to do that. Um, the four restaurants, um, Costas, Mama's, Miconos and Halas, they are still participating. Um, we have hired a band, everything basically will be running the same that had, has always.
Good. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome, hope to see you all there.
Good, any other questions? Are there any public comments on this item? Yeah, now, now we go to item number fourteen, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Tarepani?
I was hoping that uh Mr. Jackus could help, help me um re-understand how the city piggybacks on some of these uh procurement contracts. Um, in some cases, we do a lot of uh piggybacking with the city of St. Petersburg, is that right, Mr. Jackus?
We piggyback quite a few contracts, not just with the city of St. Petersburg, but the surrounding area.
So when we piggyback on a contract like this, uh, we, we don't in fact go out to bid ourselves, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
We get the benefit of their contract for themselves is in excess of a couple of million dollars, so we get the benefit of their volume for our small volume.
And we do this throughout our procurement for all different departments, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, the city of St. Petersburg goes out for bid for their tree contract and they use, let's just say they incorporate what services we need within their contract already?
No, they've got a whole laundry list of uh plantings and trees and shrubberies and, and all types of materials that we could, we could piggyback off of.
And we're just, we just get their rate?
Yes, that's exactly right.
So, could you give an example of if we didn't piggyback with the city of St. Petersburg, how would we obtain contracts or bids for this subject work?
We'd probably have to hire a landscape architect to uh help us with the uh specifications and plans and put it out for bid. And for small quantities that we use, we would not get the pricing that we would get through the city of St. Petersburg or any other large agency.
So we think.
Excuse me?
So we think.
Economy of scale.
Right. And then, how does this contract work exactly? This is just on a as need basis?
That's correct.
So hurricane comes through and we have a bunch of tree debris, we call these guys?
No, we have a dr- uh debris removal contract that we've bid ourselves. FEMA requires that we bid those, each agency bids those by themselves, piggybacking's not allowed.
So in this particular contract, this is just, we need something planted, we need ground cover?
Correct.
Et cetera?
Correct.
And then it, we get to a certain point where we say, okay, we're at the hundred and twenty thousand, so we've spent what we had budgeted for those services, right?
Correct, or we'd have to come back to the board to get an increase. Or we may not even go, may not even spend the hundred thousand, this is just based on last year.
Sure, so it's as need, we don't need it all, we don't have to spend it all.
Correct.
Understood. Um, I would, uh, thank you, Mr. Jackus, I appreciate your uh responses and some of the additional information that you gave, I just, you know, for me going back ten years, I have a little bit uh of heartburn with some of the piggybacking. Um, just because, I mean, I certainly understand the economies of scale, right, you're piggybacking, you're getting a better rate because you're jumping onto a broader service base. But in some cases, I just feel like we'd be better off to bid this stuff. Um, and in which case, we're opening up the local, local companies to, you know, have an opportunity at some of this work. And it doesn't just, I'm not just saying this as it relates to landscaping, it goes across, across the board from our procurement department, so I just wanted to use this opportunity to, to let the board know my thoughts as it relates to the piggybacking. Um, and maybe I can work with the city manager on discussing it further, but you know, I think in some aspects, I certainly understand the economies of scale, but, you know, I think there's a lot of intangible benefits that would, that could go with uh bidding some of these jobs, requesting for qualifications or proposals. And in which case, you'd see, like, later on in our agenda, we have a, a library roof, right? But we bid that job and you see some local contractors listed on the, on the uh res- for responses, so those are just my thoughts as it relates to this item, but I'm happy to approve it uh tonight.
We can talk further and I can get a list, we can get a list up of all the ones we piggyback on over a course of a year, so all of you can look at. And if there's any of that, you know, majority down the road wants to look at it, they come up, then we can do that, so.
I think that's a good idea, whatever the list is.
Yeah, we'll get you a list of the contracts we piggyback on and then we can talk at a later time, a future meeting, future work sessions, then um, which ones you may wanna, you may wanna go out and try on. Again, we can put it out, it will be, you know, in some cases costly to scope, but we can put it out and then, you know, see if they compare. If it, if it's really one that we think we can get a better pricing on, I don't, not sure on, on this one, the scope, but, but there's a bunch of them out there, so.
In some cases, you won't get a better price, but at least we'll have given the opportunity for people to bid.
We can get that list and then we can, you know, we can talk about it.
Sounds good, thank you.
And let everybody else know too.
No, that's what I said, I get that list to everybody, so everybody can have the input and we'll discuss the meeting. Um, if anybody else sees something, yeah.
Sounds good.
Any other commission comments? Are there any public comments on the item uh ten A and fourteen? Now, the chair will attend a motion.
Motion approved.
And roll call.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarepani?
Yes.
Merrill, who is this?
Yes. We're now going to the uh special consent agenda, item number nineteen, this is the award bid number nineteen zero zero eighty-one. JBJ, library roof replacement painting and waterproofing. Staff report?
Simply, again, this is something brought to you strictly for the cost. Um, I think Bob Robertson's still, he's still here, he's the project manager, again, this is something we know we've needed, we've, we've put it out to bid. Um, although there is a disparity from the, the winning bid or proposed night, the other ones, it is a company that we have looked at and done good work. Um, Precision, so we, obviously, it's something that's been needed to be done, so we're looking for approval. I'm through the bid process for Precision Roofing, uh, to do the library roof. I think we said construction, it was gonna take month, was it, or two months, what was the time? Bob, the timer? Sixty days.
Sixty days?
Yep.
Well, that was my question, Mr. Licuris, uh, if we can complete this project before the rainy season, since we know we got a problem with the roof. It'll be done then, thank you. Any commission comments? Commissioner Carr?
Let's have a couple of questions about the project as a whole. Um, is it the whole roof that we're doing or just part of the roof?
Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director, it's the whole roof.
Okay, is the whole roof bad or is it just part of the roof that's bad?
Uh, there's so much of it that's bad that it's, it's more cost effective to replace the whole thing.
Okay, is there a life expectancy of a metal roof for replacement that we're looking at?
I, I believe it's fifty years.
Okay. Um, when was the library built? Does someone recall that?
Nineteen ninety.
Twenty years, or twenty-five years old or so?
No one knows.
Okay. Um, do we know why this current metal roof has not lasted longer than like a traditional tar tile roof?
Not sure of the cause.
Not sure what the cause is? Um, we've got a warranty on this roof, Bob, wha- what's the warranty, do you know?
Oh, boy, I think it's a fifteen year. Um, I'd have to double check that.
Was that the same for all the quote, quoting companies, do you know?
We would have requested the same warranty in the specification.
Okay. Do we know who did the roof initially?
Um, I, I have a guess, but I'm, I'm not sure who did it.
Okay. Do you know if the city's reached out, and I don't mean to be grilling you like I'm interrogating you, but do you know if the city's reached out to you at all or reached out to the contractor that worked on this to dispute that the roof didn't last fifty years or however long they promised?
I believe the public works people did reach out to them, but I think we're way past warranty periods for repair work. So I think the, the spot repairs that have been done have been, I, I believe in-house, Mark, I'm, I'm not sure who I got involved in this um, a little bit later.
I, I mean, I have, I encourage metal roofs for all buildings, 'cause I know they last so much longer than a traditional roof. But I'm pretty frustrated in the aspect that the roof got this far overall. Um, I do wanna thank you, Bob, for uh taking the initiative to um putting together a annual um review of all of our public buildings. Uh, and city manager, thank you for making that direction, Mr. Robertson. Uh, I feel that's an important aspect, um, to make sure that we don't get to this point again, uh, to where we can make some repairs to where the roof isn't completely deteriorated, where you have to replace the whole roof. Uh, I do have some concerns about that, that we waited so long for it to get to that point. One other question, um, how long did we know the roof was bad? Are you aware of how long we've been working on this?
Well, like I said, I know um, facilities maintenance has done their best to, to make spot repairs where they could. Um, I don't know what, when the complaints go back to, but uh, long enough to certainly bring it to our attention and make this a capital project for this year.
Okay. Um, secondly, are you concerned, it was, I looked at the quotes, it was pretty unique on how far off they went from like four hundred, six hundred, seven hundred and eight hundred thousand, it's kinda ironic that they went that high up and, and the intervals that they did. Um, is there any concern about a quoting company that they underbid or anything along those lines with looking at their other quotes?
Uh, we did check the, the quality of, the company that won the bid is a qualified firm, they have bonding and insurance, so they are capable of doing the work. I know what you're saying about some of the other bids being pretty high, but that's not unusual for us, we do see a lot of that being a smaller market, a smaller town with smaller jobs, sometimes the big companies throw larger money at, at a small job and see if it sticks, that happens sometimes.
Okay, uh, second, I wanna ask if we could um just inquire with Precision, they may offer a uh certain warranty on the roof themselves. And then um, the manufacturer may offer a longer warranty, so if there's a longer warranty available uh with a, a particular metal, I would encourage that as well. Um, if we can secure the longest warranty that we could have. And also, are you familiar with how long Precision's been in business?
I don't know, Jay, did you come across that in your research? Quite a while, that's what he's saying.
Five years, ten years, twenty years? Ten plus years, okay. I think that's an important part when selecting a roofing company, 'cause there's some fly-by-night roofing, and I'm not accusing this company as that of all, I just wanna make sure that they're gonna be around if we need to claim a, a warranty at all on this expensive roof that we're replacing very maturely already, so.
Thank you, Commissioner, I will make sure to uh get the warranty information cleared up.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Tarepani?
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Carr asked some of my questions as it relates to the age of the roof and why we're having to replace it so early. Um, I would like to illustrate, again, reillustrate my point on the last agenda item, which was, you know, even though we had two local, or we had, so we have four responders to this bid and two of them were local companies. So they had the opportunity to at least bid on the job, they didn't get the work, but they at least had the opportunity to bid on it, which goes back to my last point regarding piggybacking. Um, so my main question regarding this item, uh, Bob, is the, some of the contingencies that are associated with some of these roofing contracts, so like, for example, you know, the woodwork, right? So, I'm sure that uh staff and procurement reviewed these, you know, hand in hand. Um, but I would, being, given that the roof is evidently so bad, I would assume that there is uh a lot of rotted woodwork, do we have any estimates as to that or any i- any threshold in terms of contingencies for uh additional costs with this roofing company?
I think we put a ten percent on this one, yeah, our typical is to put a ten percent contingency for any unforeseen work like woodwork, if we were to encounter that during the reconstruction. Uh, the initial testing didn't indicate that there was much damage, if any. Um, they did pull some panels and check during, when the architect did the design work. Um, so we're hopeful that it's not there, but we do have a contingency, contingency to help us out if we do.
And the roof to be replaced is similar or the same to what is there?
Right, with
Standing seam?
With current updated materials, but yeah.
Any differentiation in color?
Um, I don't think so, I think it's the same.
Same.
I think it is, yeah, I'm looking here, I don't recall specifying the color.
Alright, thank you.
Hey, Bob, just to follow up what uh Commissioner Carr was concerned with, the quality of work, being that this is a roof, once you cover it up, you still can't see what's underneath. Are we gonna have somebody available to uh, to make sure that uh all the re- uh, the right repairs have been made?
Yes, sir, I'll have my project inspector on site every day.
Commissioner Donovan?
Uh, yeah, it's rare to see a metal roof in such bad shape so quick, so I was just, my first thought was that maybe in one of the major storms, um, we might have had some roof damage. Um, I know they had mentioned like the annual just maintenance review of city buildings. Um, is that something we also do after large unnamed storms or is it just hurricanes? Um, 'cause maybe rather than having that annual review, maybe we should do at least just like a four-point inspection or a windmint inspection. I mean, those are really low-cost stuff that we can do uh after a large storm, because I'm, I don't know, my, my logic is that maybe it was damaged repeatedly by big storms and we just didn't really catch it.
Understood.
Is that, I mean, is that something we do right now? Like when, like what, what makes us go out and check out a building? Is it just, is it just visible to the naked eye, we say, wow, that roof looks bad, or there's water falling through the ceiling, or is it, is it more routine?
I myself am not responsible for maintenance of these buildings, but if we did have a major storm come through, uh, we would either rely on the staff that occupy those buildings to, to report back to public works and the pub- and the facilities maintenance folks. Um, or um, do a round of inspections after a major storm, that would, that would make a lot of sense. I don't know if that's done now, I, I think it is, but I, again, I'm not, I'm not part of the maintenance, maintenance team.
Okay, and you know, annually, um, I know you're probably not a part of this either then, but um, just, what's the annual review consist of, can you answer that or no?
Sure, yeah, that's actually something that has been directed um, uh, for me to handle, but what we're doing is, um, and we're just now getting this, we're about halfway through our process now. Um, we're going to each of the city's facilities and um, doing kind of a cursory overview of, of the condition of the building. So uh, it, it may involve getting up on the roof, uh, plumbing systems, electrical, windows, doors, woodwork. windows, doors, woodwork, um, carpeting, HVAC. Um, it, it's really just about kind of doing a, an overall assessment, so we know what we're up against, trying to help us plan for future years, and maybe even work out a strategic plan for the needs that we might predict for the future. So, we say, okay, that roof's got probably six more years, so we put it on a six-year CIP, and carpeting in here is, uh, maybe got another year, so you, you, you plan it out over time. That's the idea to work.
Okay. And how long have the inspections, I'm sorry again for putting you on the spot like this, but.
That's okay.
How long, do you know how long our inspections have said, wow, that's a bad roof? We gotta replace this roof. How, how long, like, when did they catch that?
At the, at the library?
Yeah.
Um, like I said, I, I don't really know, um, I, there have been condition issues reported over the years, and, and ma- building maintenance has done spot repairs, so it's, it's been a couple of years. We started the, uh, the design work, uh, last year, um, with an architect, so we could put together plans and specs, so we could put it out to bid, um, and get to this point. Um, so it was identified, um.
Okay. Yeah, maybe that's something we could look into, maybe instead of like just the annual maintenance review of city buildings, maybe like a quarterly inspection where people get up on the roof and, and take a look at it, um, just because it's, it's, it's hard for me to grasp that this metal roof failed so quickly, um, without being impacted directly from a storm or something like that. Um, so maybe that's something we could look into, or at least relay to our maintenance guys? Yeah?
Say yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? The chair will entertain a motion?
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarepani?
Yes.
Mayor Lewisus?
Yes. Item number twenty is the award bid number nineteen zero zero seventy-four, B C M, fuel, ethanol, and diesel. Staff report?
Again, this is another one strictly on special consent because of the price, um, you see two companies bid, the local company won the bid, so we request approval.
Are there any commission comments?
Just some more clarity on this one for me. Uh, this is just, the way the backup reads, it's just for delivery of the product, basically, to our workshop, right, or our work site, where we have our, our large tanks?
That's correct.
Okay.
Plus, part of the contract stipulates that if there is a hurricane conditions, they're supposed to put a tanker wagon on site for us to use.
That's nice. Um, and then this fee's annually, and it's good for five years, right?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, I did notice that it talked about estimated annual quantities, it has ethanol and diesel, doesn't have anything, uh, at the, at the front of the bid, it says fuel, ethanol, and diesel. And then we look at estimated annual quantities, it just says ethanol and diesel. Uh, I do know, like, the fireboat would run off of non-ethanol fuel, uh, the mowers, the string trimmers, the blowers, you would run those off non-ethanol fuel. And then my second question, has there been some type of analysis done by our fleet department to say, is it more efficient to use a non-ethanol fuel cleaner for the engines, um, it burns ri- uh, richer, where you get a better miles per gallon, something along those lines? Has there been any discussion about that?
Uh, not, not with me, but that would not occur with me anyway.
But the non-ethanol fuel would though, right? Is there not a need for non-ethanol fuel in the city of Turpin?
They pride, provide us with their requirements, we put out the bid for their requirements, uh, that's all, that's all we can go by.
Okay. Mark, do we know where we fuel the, the fireboat at?
No, I can get, again, I, we could, we could get, you know, some of this involve o- other departments and stuff, we knew those questions were coming up, we could've got that for, but we can, we can find out where those are, are from.
Yeah.
You wanna know if we use ethanol fuel, or non-ethanol fuel in like, floor or lawn mower, stuff like that?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking at the estimated annual quantities, and it's saying anything about non-ethanol fuel, so I just wanna make sure that we're looking at that, and if we're not using non-ethanol fuel, we should probably take a step back, because it's gonna increase the maintenance costs of these, um, first the fireboat, and also the other tools that we use as well. It's just small details, I don't think it, thank you.
Any other commission comment? Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? Need a, need a motion?
Motion approved.
One second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarepani?
Yes.
Mayor Lewisus?
Yes. Item twenty-one is to authorize the city attorney to initiate foreclosure proceedings for enforcement case, uh, C E B fifteen dash eight zero 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 six two six for one thousand ninety-eight South Pinellas Avenue. City Attorney, if you present this item?
Of course, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is, we are requesting that you allow us to foreclose the lien, um, on this property, ten ninety-eight South Pinellas Avenue. The owner is Juniper Development LLC. Uh, this case came before code board, uh, for, uh, maintenance of the property, there were some overgrown trees and some Brazilian pepper trees that were on the property. The, um, property did come into compliance on February fourteenth, two thousand eighteen. The owner of the property, uh, Juniper Development, went before code board to try and get, uh, reconsideration of the fine, but was denied. Uh, in the meantime, um, Attorney Trask has been trying to negotiate with the property owners as far as with, uh, settlement of the lien is concerned. Uh, however, uh, there is a, a wide spance between the city and, um, the property owners to what it should settle for. So, at this time, um, Attorney Trask is asking for authorization to go ahead and foreclose on the lien. Uh, that does not necessarily mean that negotiations will cease, um, but at least it is something that, you know, we can work towards some sort of resolution with regard to the lien that's on the property. And I can answer any question.
Thank you. Fresh my memory, didn't they cut trees without a permit as well?
Um, I'm unsure of that, I do know that they did have some Australian, uh, I'm gonna get this wrong, Australian spruce, Australian?
Pines.
Pines, I knew it was one of the two. Um, and then they had Brazilian pepper trees, they were cited for those, as well as just general overgrowth on the property. Um, and I believe that we were required to have them cut them down, and they either did cut them down, or the city forced them to be cut down, so, um, I don't have that information, though.
Commission comment? Vice Mayor?
Um, Mr. City Manager, within our, uh, retainer with the city attorney, how does it spell out the foreclosure process? Is that included in our retainer? Or is that a separate?
Um, with a specific, uh, agreement? Give me one moment.
I don't think it's in the.
I don't think, I think it's a special litigation matter.
Court action.
Additional money?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, it is, it is, I, I believe it's outside of the retainer, and it's a special litigation matter, but I also do believe that we request costs when we foreclose, when we go through the foreclosure action.
Okay. So, my thinking is this, um, when we foreclose on a piece of property and the city owns a piece of property, we don't collect any ad verum tax fees from the property, so there's no, there's no real benefit to us owning a property as it relates to ad verum revenues. So, if we foreclosed on this, first of all, we'd, we'd pay for it out of pocket, it's not included in the retainer. Um, last time we foreclosed on a piece of property that I can recall, it was the Ford lot.
Uh, keep in mind, you're not foreclosing on the property, you're foreclosing the code enforcement board lien.
And then, what happens after that?
Uh, well, it's a lien on the property, it's a non-homesteaded property, so if they were to go ahead and sell it, it would sell subject to the lien. Uh, there's no mortgage on the property, I believe there's only one other encoverance on the property, it's a Pinellas County lien, um, so we would be second in line to the Pinellas lien, because we were second in time, um, and so if they were to sell that property, um, you know, we, we would be paid at that time.
If we foreclosed on the lien and nobody bid our, our lien amount?
What do you mean, bid the lien amount?
Well, we have a lien amount, right? For seventy-one thousand dollars?
Seventy-one thousand two hundred dollars.
That's the lien amount, right?
Correct.
And you're saying the Pinellas County is in the first position?
They are in the first position.
For what?
Um, let me check on the title report. Uh, it just looks like there's an o- order imposing lien that's recorded, um, by Pinellas County, and then there was a tax lien, but that's been paid off, that was eleven hundred and eighty-two dollars. I don't have the order imposing lien record amount for Pinellas County, that's not listed on the title report.
So, if we force the foreclosure process on our lien amount, then Pinellas County gets paid first, correct?
Correct. Unless their lien has already been extinguished, I'm, I'm unclear, that was as of the date of the title report.
Okay. So, my, my thinking is we don't foreclose on it, we just try and direct the city attorney to go back and continue to negotiate, um, you know, if it came to, if it came to the point where we were in the first position, and nobody bid our seventy-one thousand or seventy-two thousand dollars, and we were the lien holder, we would then own the property, is that right?
No, the prop, the property is owned free and clear, there's no mortgage on the property. This is, this would just be a code enforcement board lien, so unless, I mean, it, really the only time that's gonna necessarily come into play is if the party somehow, i- if they sell the property, they have to sell it subject to the lien on the property, so the lien would have to be extinguished, um, either negotiated within the terms of the sale, or the lien would have to be extinguished at that time by the, the property owner, or by the purchaser.
So, if we foreclose on the lien, and if we foreclose on it, and the property owner doesn't pay the seventy-one thousand dollars?
Correct.
What happens?
If they don't pay the seventy-one hundred thousand, seventy-one thousand dollars, that's what we're foreclosing on. So, the, the, the lien on the property right now is seventy-one thousand two hundred dollars, the lien is already there, so we're looking to foreclose on that lien and try and recover those, recover that cost and collect our fees.
We don't?
And if we don't?
Then what happens?
Um, that's something that we'd have to talk to Attorney Trask about.
Is that what we're not trying to do right now? Talk about it? So, if we foreclose on it, and they don't pay the seventy-one thousand dollars, who gets the property?
The entire property? That's unclear to me, I, I just know that we have an interest in the property.
Mayor, can I help clarify, I think, what I think's going on? Do you mind? Uh, so, let's say the property goes to auction, and the bid is, it, the auction sells at fifty thousand dollars. Um, it didn't go above the seventy-one thousand dollar lien that we, the city has foreclosed on, what would happen in that situation?
Well, I guess my question is, how would the property go to auction? There's no mortgage rate, there's, the, the property's owned free and clear. There's no first mortgage or second mortgage on the property, the property owners own it, so.
So, we're the, we have a lien on the property?
For seventy-one thousand two hundred dollars, correct.
We're gonna foreclose on the lien?
Correct, try and collect that.
And they don't, and they don't pay us?
Correct.
The seventy-one thousand dollars?
We have a, correct.
We own the property now?
For seventy-one thousand two hundred dollars.
Correct.
I am unsure of that.
Okay. So, maybe we should defer this until we can get some?
We could, I, I think the whole intent of this, the offers that we've been getting, he's been negotiating a long time, and the offers we've been getting are, are minimal or none except, so, um, to take us seriously, um, that's why he brought forward, to bring this forward, so we could hopefully, in, you know, let the property owner know we're serious, and, uh, make a claim that's appropriate to bring to you. I think that's his whole intention. But if you wanted to defer it and, 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 um, and bring it forward next with Mr. Trask, to understand that, we can do that.
I think we should discuss with Mr. Trask, I mean, I don't have any desire to own the property.
Yeah, I, I think we've been trying and trying, and the offers have been ones we wouldn't even bring before you, 'cause they're ridiculously low, so.
I mean, we're, we're tens of thousands of dollars apart.
But, but.
Personally, I need to know what the chain, chain of events are gonna be?
Okay.
What the, you know?
Well, it's best, let's, let's defer to the fourteen.
I would agree, I think Mr. Trask is best to answer those questions for you.
I mean, I don't wanna speak for the entire board, but that would be my position. Unless we can get, you know, all the information that we're looking for, I would just defer it.
Well, let, let's say that we gave you the authorization of the city attorney to, uh, to initiate the foreclosure, what happened?
Uh, Mr. Trask would initiate foreclosure actions, he'd file a foreclosure action with the, the clerk of court, um, a complaint would be filed, and at that time, like I said, negotiations don't stop, so if the property owners came back and wanted to say, okay, you know, you're foreclosing on the fir- the whole seventy-one thousand two hundred, um, they, they may increase their negotiating point, I mean, they're, they are very, very low at this point. Um, so, he would start foreclosure proceedings, there would be an answer, or there would be a complaint, there would be an answer, or there would be a default if they chose not to answer, um, and the foreclosure proceedings would proceed through the court. Now, that's not necessarily gonna happen overnight either, so.
Is this something that will come back to us, or, uh?
No.
So, you have a thorough authority to do, to go through the foreclosure process?
Correct, that's what Mr. Trask is asking for, is the authority to start the foreclosure proceedings.
Vice Mayor, I have several questions that he'd like, like, clear, get away with.
It's up, it, it's up to the commission, if you all would like to defer this item until Mr. Trask can answer those questions, we can, you guys can certainly do that.
Do you want to defer, or need a motion for that?
I can make the motion, but.
Uh, yeah, actually, just, yeah, real quick, um, I had a comment on that, I just wanna clarify that this is all with the goal in mind of just collecting the fines from this property owner, and not, uh, us going after the property, or trying to own the property, or trying to develop on it, 'cause this has been in the spot, this particular property has been in the spotlight in the past for some environmental issues, um.
Correct, this is the old Wawa.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of citizens concerned with the fate kind of this property, so I just wanted to clarify and get it on the record that this is us trying to go after these fines and collect these fines from code enforcement, and this isn't us trying to str- a strong arm or way in, like, get, getting the property and development on it.
No, not at all.
Okay.
And also, if I understand this correctly, is if, uh, the owner doesn't cooperate, we have to go forward with the foreclosure process?
No, I mean, you don't have to, you could sit there.
Yeah, so you can sell for a low outrageous price that I don't think you'll do.
Right. Yeah, I was gonna say, you don't have to, but it would be prudent to do so.
Any other questions?
So, right now, our decisions are possibly deferring this to when, um, Attorney Trask will be here.
The next, the next commission meeting where Mr. Trask will be available.
Okay, I'd support that.
I move to defer until, uh, the next meeting when Mr. Trask, who wrote the memo, can be here.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarepani?
Yes.
Mayor Lewisus?
Yes. Next is item twenty-two, resolution two thousand nineteen dash ten, to authorize signatures. City Attorney, please read the resolution.
Resolution twenty nineteen dash ten, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Turpin Springs, Florida, designating certain officials as authorized signatories on negotiable instruments of the City of Turpin Springs.
Well, this is straightforward, just opposition sign. Any question? Any public comments on this item? Need a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry Penny?
Yes.
Merrill Housas?
Yes. Next is item twenty-three, resolution two thousand nineteen dash thirteen, award file number nineteen zero zero eighty-six, dash C, dash CM, um, fire ladder truck lease purchase through, uh, Sourcewell contract number zero two twenty-eight eighteen. Fire fighting operators and related equipment, accessories and supplies. City Attorney, please read the resolution.
Resolution number twenty nineteen dash thirteen, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Turpin Springs, Florida, declaring its intent to enter into a master lease purchase agreement with PNC Equipment Finance LLC and associated agreements, authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement, agreements, setting the aggregate principal amount of the leases, subjecting the payment of the leases to annual appropriation, confirming that the city does not anticipate to issue more than ten million dollars of tax exempt obligations during the current calendar year, providing for an effective date.
Staff report, Mr. Corrigan.
We'll have our fire chief and our finance director who put this thing together. Obviously, this is the goal to buy a ladder truck. We've had it in our penny plan because we know every ten years we have to do so. So it's been, you've seen it on our, on our projections of the penny money. Um, the reason our finance director's involved is obviously this is a, this is an expenditure and why we wanna propose the lease is we wanna free up eight hundred thousand dollars in the penny next year to be able to do a lot of the projects you wanna do. So we feel it's best to go to finance and our finance directors worked very hard for many weeks to try to get us the best deal possible. Um, the reason we're going now and for next year is once we ordered, it takes a year to get the truck. So if anyone's wondering if to next year, why are we here now? And that's the reason, because it takes a year and we've got a truck that's in maintenance more than it's operable and again, it's time. So I'll turn it over to fire chief and the finance director to.
Good evening, Scott Young, Fire Chief. Uh, we have a little slideshow presentation to go over some stuff with you. I'll do the first couple of slides and then the, uh, finance director will take over from there. So currently, the city has one ladder truck, uh, which is stationed out by the high school at the, uh, Gulf Road Fire Station. Uh, this ladder trucks are required, uh, to maintain our ISO rating in the city. Uh, if we did not have a ladder truck, our ISO rating would, uh, go up, uh, possibly to a three or possibly a four. Right now, we're a two uh, out of a scale of one to ten, one being the best, ten being, uh, not so good. Uh, the ladder truck also meets the National Fire Protection Association's, uh, safety guidelines, uh, that we, uh, try to adhere to at all times. Uh, one of the reasons we're coming to you to request this truck is due to the, uh, downtime and cost of the repairs of the current ladder truck uh, that we have. Uh, it was, uh, scheduled like the city manager said for twenty twenty, but we're asking, uh, to move that up a short period of time here. Uh, the city, if we do not have a ladder truck in service, we are dependent on other cities' ladder trucks to come into town, uh, which is causes an increase in time of response and can affect any type of rescues or fires. Uh, historically, ladder trucks are more expensive, uh, to maintain, especially as they get older, all the mechanisms that they have, uh, components, hydraulic systems, et cetera. Uh, as you can see up there, from October of eighteen to March of nineteen this year, approximately a hundred sixty-five days, the ladder truck was out of service, seventy-two days during that period of time or forty-four percent of the time. Uh, cost of repairs to this truck over the last four and a half years has been about a hundred thirty-four thousand dollars. And just since October, uh, this year, we spent about twenty-three thousand dollars on repairs on the current ladder truck. Uh, at this time, I'll turn it over to the finance director and he can go over the specifics of the financing.
Good evening, Ron Herring, Finance Director. Uh, when Scott came to me, I wasn't that excited about, you know, paying a million dollars a little bit earlier and stuff. But then when I saw the, uh, we researched the cost of the truck and how much it's been increasing over the years, especially the last four years. The amount of downtime on the truck, you know, that was substantial as he was mentioning there. Um, the trade-in value, a hundred and fifty-five thousand, it's, it's a good value to get back for the truck. It's twenty-five percent of the cost of the truck. The truck costs six hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, back in two thousand ten. And like we're saying, it was budgeted in two thousand, well, we're advancing it to two thousand nineteen. It was budgeted in two thousand twenty for the, uh, one million dollars. As the chief was saying, it takes ten, eleven months to, to order, to build the truck. Uh, due to committed projects in the penny fund, the option for leasing through Pierce, for through Pierce PNC is a good option. Uh, favorable time for financing rates. It went down a little bit since December, so hovering right around three percent. Um, Pierce has a ladder truck available, as we're saying, through the Sourcewell contract, which includes a leasing. Uh, that's what, we're guaranteed by a third party, the a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar trade-in through April thirtieth. After that, they will only guarantee a hundred and forty thousand for the trade-in. And that what the, what we've been told and what the average usually is, if we wait until October first, the new year to purchase a truck, the, the costs usually go up about, on average, about three percent. And I calculated with the tariffs, the cost would go up about fifty thousand dollars if we wait until October first to purchase the truck. Uh, this, uh, slide just details the purchase of the truck, the cost of it. Uh, as you can see, it's a one million, two hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. We're adding on equipment to the truck of seventy thousand, eight, one, three, and that's trying to get the, the chief's got this equipment onto it. So once we get the truck, we can get it on the road as quick as possible when we get delivery of the truck and also for warranty purposes. Uh, the trade-in value, we'd get the a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar trade-in, trade-in. Uh, we'd also get a prepaid discount through PNC. If we went through the lease with PNC, we'd get the full thirty-six thousand, two sixty-one, uh, prepaid discount, leaving the price at one million, ninety-four thousand, seven ninety-two. And as highlighted below down there, we will also get reimbursed a hundred and five thousand from the county towards the truck. That's not netted out of that total right there. And then the question was, okay, we're gonna buy a truck. Do we do cash? Do we do bank financing or do we do the lease through Pierce PNC? Um, and like I say, due to the committed projects in the penny fund, we're looking more towards the financing. And like I say, it's a favorable, favorable time for the financing. But if we go out for bank financing, not through the lease through Pierce, if we had to go out for, for financing, we have to go out for bid. Well, when we go out for bid, it takes a couple of months to get the bids back. So that would probably put us past April thirtieth, which would, we, our trade-in value would go from the a hundred and fifty-five thousand to the a hundred and forty thousand. Also, when we do bank financing, we have issuance costs and they can, in the past, we've averaged right around, almost upwards of forty thousand dollars for issuance costs. And if we're keeping the truck longer, that means we have more maintenance cost on the old truck as we're keeping it longer another couple of months. I inquired just roughly from some of my people I know in the banks and our financial advisor, if we went out for bank financing. You know, we were looking at rates between three to three point two percents through the banks. Uh, the lease to own through Pierce PNC through the contract, you know, I prefer the lease with, I think what we're going towards is a five-year lease at the three point zero eight percent through the contract. It's the lowest rate with the lowest term and I think it gives us what we're trying to do. We're trying to free up some money mostly in, in fiscal year two thousand twenty. There's no issuance costs. The first payment is not due until, um, one year from now, uh, April two thousand twenty. Versus paying cash, we'll still have that money in the bank and we'll still be earning interest on it. And it makes available about, probably about eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty thousand, uh, potential projects in the penny fund that may be coming up. And just to throw in, it, it, at times it's so, you know, I know we have budgeted a replacement of Station Seventy. The, um, the, the last payment would be about the same time as, uh, Station Seventy might be looking into to being replaced. And the final slide here is just trying to show the, uh, the payment options here. We went out, when we went out for quotes through Pierce PNC, we pay cash. It's a one million, ninety-four thousand, the top line there. Uh, highlighted is the five-year lease to own it, the three point zero eight percent, annual payment, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five ninety-nine, for total payments of one million, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine ninety-seven. Uh, the cost of repaying cash would be the a hundred and three thousand, two oh five, which is the interest portion of the, uh, lease payments. And then we also got quotes on the seven-year, ten, seven, excuse me, seven-year, eight-year, ten-year, ten-year turn-in balloon with a balloon payment. And, um, basically, these rates are, on the quotes are good through April thirtieth and that is my last slide and we'll open up for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Uh, this is really a new concept. We never used that before, right? We never, uh, leased any equipment before, right?
Uh, we have years past. We have done some leases and we've done some bank financings. That's why I know when we've done bank financing, we, we bought a truck and we had like forty thousand dollars worth of issuance costs.
Yeah.
So years ago, we have done it.
Well, I, I like the concept because it's gonna free up, uh, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do other projects that we have, uh, in the works. But, uh, I still have a question to ask. The rating number three that, uh, Chief Young mentioned earlier, what do you mean by rating three and what do we have now?
Right now, the city is an ISO rating of two.
Okay.
Uh, they come through everywhere, anywhere between three and four years, so we're due, uh, for a new rating, uh, audit. Uh, the insurance rating service, uh, uh, it specs the fire department in the city based on its equipment, staffing, water and the ci- uh, city system, things like that. And they rate on how well they believe you can do the job. The rating also reflects insurance rates for homes and businesses within the city. So the higher your rating, the more insurance, uh, homeowner's insurance and business insurance goes up. So if we can keep it down to twos and threes, it's really good. When I started here thirty years ago, the city was a six.
This truck has been in repair shop more, uh, quite a bit of time. Is that affecting our, uh, rating right now as it is?
No, it's not affecting our rating because we haven't been checked.
Okay.
Um, they, they give you an allowance for so much time for repairs and maintenance in the, the audit itself. So we, we, we've been fine in the past, but, uh, this truck is just starting to cost us a lot more money than it, uh, is probably worth at this point.
Yeah. Well, we knew that I didn't, it was coming. We, we knew that we're, we're gonna have to address that soon. But, uh, another question that I have is, uh, with this price tag, is that including training for the personnel?
For training?
Training, yeah.
No, sir. No. We'll do that on our in-house.
Okay, so you do have the means to do?
Yes, once, once the truck is delivered, they'll go through a rigorous program of, uh, driving it, training on it, making sure they know how it works before it's, uh, put out on the street, uh, as a frontline unit.
Mr. Herring, you mentioned earlier about warranty. Would you explain what kind of warranty we get?
I, I think I can give you that. The, uh, there's warranties, the standard warranty is, uh, one-year bumper to bumper. But then there's a, a list of different things that, uh, are different warranties. The, uh, um, engine itself is a five-year warranty. The frame is a fifty-year warranty. Uh, it goes on and go on. Transmission's five years. The water tank is a lifetime warranty on the truck. The aerial device itself is a twenty-year warranty now. And there's a, a bunch of other components, paint warranties and everything else, but the main ones I just told you are what we really look at, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Chief, I appreciate you, uh, being here tonight and also wanna thank you for your foresight as it relates to this truck and bringing it forward and saying that it's something that you need, uh, in advance of the budgeted year. Um, you know, certainly the timing is, uh, historic in nature with the fire that took place yesterday, uh, in France. So, you know, the, the stats that you provided in terms of being down seventy-two days, uh, in recent, you know, in, in recent history, um, coupled with the timing with the, uh, events that took place yesterday, I think is unique and it certainly adds some perspective for us. Um, you know, wholeheartedly support y'all, uh, in this, in this expenditure. I wanna thank Mr. Herring for, uh, some of your insight as it relates to the lease purchase and, you know, working the numbers in such a way to where it's palatable for us. Um, you mentioned about, uh, with the lease purchase, it enables us to keep some money in the bank, earning interest. Uh, and I'm just curious, as it relates to the three percent interest that we're gonna be paying on the, on the cost, uh, what kind of interest we earn with that money staying in the bank to kind of offset that?
Well, at the minimum, we have a money market. We're earning two point zero five percent, but we've got some other, we can purchase CDs, a six-month CD at two point five percent.
So the, the difference in change in money is about a percent?
Yes. You know, and I calculated, you know, if we were able to, we don't spend, we would get, we would get back about forty-two thousand dollars by, not, unless it's spent on something else, but would, the difference would be about forty-two thousand I could earn versus paying cash for the whole truck up front. It'd be about forty-two thousand dollars.
Understood. Thank you for looking at it that way.
Who was your car?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, just wanted to address, or ask a couple of different questions. Um, uh, since Commissioner or Vice Mayor Terry Penny was asking about the financing part of it, I wanna go ahead and hit that first. Um, did we look at, uh, looking at using unassigned funds since those are earning two point oh five to two point five? And then paying ourselves as the city three percent back as well as an option? Uh, how was that vetted? And, uh, and in saying that, it's a twelfth, it would be a twelfth of the unaside funds, unassigned funds paid back over five years. Uh, and I believe as our external auditor mentioned, there's, we have a healthy unassigned fund. Um, so I just wanna touch base a little bit further on that, please.
Well, we're trying, we wanted to pay for it out of the penny fund. Right now, you've got, um, about the, all the projects in the penny fund are committed right now. There's not much left and trying to go into the, into the new year, two thousand twenty. You could pay for it out of the, uh, general fund. You're talking about going for the inter-fund. But then you, you know, if you wanted to do an inter-fund loan, which I know sometimes isn't popular, you could do an inter-fund loan from the general fund to the penny fund to cover that.
So regardless, it would, I mean, it would be paid back over five years from the penny fund if it's going to PNC or if it's going back to the general fund, correct?
Correct. We would be paying it ourselves and then we'd do an inter-fund loan from the general fund to cover it. You know, if you wanted to do it over five years, then we could schedule that out.
Okay. So I do feel that it's important to have, uh, what we have in unaside funds. Uh, I think the board should weigh, is it worth keeping the million dollars in unaside funds for the forty thousand dollars that we'd be paying for the cost of money at the time? Uh, happy to go in that a little bit further, but I think that's something we should weigh overall. Um, a couple of questions I have just about the truck. Um, Chief, if you could help me out with this. Uh, can you just address a couple of the, um, like, how often is a ladder truck called upon to use the ladder, not just the truck itself on a call, but how often do we actually use the ladder?
We don't keep stats on how often it's been used on a, a fire. Um, we can certainly start doing that. Uh, but the truck is used, it's, every fire it goes on, it's there for a purpose, if it's being used or not. It's there at the scene to be used in the event that the fire gets beyond what we can control, that we need to set it up for ho- high volumes of water, uh, that or protect other homes. It's also used for rescue. We've used our truck over the years many times to, uh, take roofers off the, uh, roof. One was electrocuted by a storm and to get him down off the roof, we had to use the ladder truck. It was the safest and best, the quickest way to do it. So it's used for a variety of things. We just don't keep stats on how many times it's actually gone up. So I wouldn't have that number for you.
Okay. How, so, um, this is nothing personal. Uh, how does the city know they need a ladder truck if we don't know how often the ladder truck is actually needed? And, uh, the second follow-up question would be, what are the needs of the ladder truck other than that a, a normal engine couldn't use? Cause I know it's about five hundred thousand dollars difference in cost, right? Uh, so I just wanna understand that a little bit better for the public, so we all have a better understanding.
Well, the ladder truck is there, one, because of ISO ratings. You want it for the insurance ratings. But the truck is a multi-functional piece of equipment. It's used for a variety of different calls. It's there for high angle rescues. It's there for fires. It's used for, uh, uh, public safety, uh, uh, rescues. Uh, the truck is there to get people off roofs, like I mentioned before, at a safer, quicker, uh, option than trying to bring them down ladders and, uh, that are up against the wall, et cetera. Uh, one rescue, you know, of a person on a roof quickly is, is the cost of a truck, in my opinion.
Okay. Uh, and I agree with you, uh, the, the life, we can't put a number on the safety of a life. Uh, again, this is just information. I think it's good for the public to know. So can you also help me understand, uh, do we have inter-governmental, um, agreements with Palm Harbor or any other, um, local fire departments that have ladder trucks also?
We have mutual aid agreements with all the departments in the county. Uh, so, and when our truck is either out of service and for mechanical reasons or out on another call, uh, when calls come in, that, uh, structural fire calls, et cetera, the other ladder trucks, the next closest one will come into the city.
Okay. And then, um.
Vice versa, it gets going out.
That we go out and do the same thing, right? It says, the, you mentioned, you referenced the ISO rating a couple of times. Does ISO specifically reference the need of a ladder truck? Or is it just the having a, a fire truck?
We get points. It's point-based. So if you have a ladder truck and they check that off on their, uh, check sheet, you get so many points for that ladder truck, which is quite a few points. If you don't have the ladder truck, you won't get those points. So you could come up and based on their scale, you would go up in possible in their rating scale.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that it specifically talks about.
We always usually hover between a two and a three. It depends on what their criterias have changed.
Okay. Secondly, um, can you touch base and let us know if the city's looking at an alternative? Obviously, a ladder truck's really expensive and we know replacing, um, a fire truck, a, a regular engine without a ladder costs about six hundred thousand dollars. The last time we did that, uh, is the fire department looking at alternatives to, I guess, reduce the wear and tear, um, through other initiatives or other ideas to reduce the wear and tear on these large vehicles?
Uh, we are working on a plan right now, um, in talks with the county to, uh, get some additional funding possibly for, uh, some personnel, but it's very preliminary right now. We did start a pilot program, uh, with, uh, one of our SUVs, uh, when staffing permits, uh, to take the burden of, uh, some of the calls off the other units, uh, in the hopes to, you know, reduce the wear and tear on the vehicles. But it's very preliminary right now, so we haven't even got the stats and what the numbers will be.
Okay. So my understanding, the, the majority of the calls that you'll have are EMT-related.
The majority of our calls are medical, correct.
Yeah. Uh, thank you for doing that pilot program. I'm looking forward to hearing more about it and your relationship with the county. Uh, thanks for everything you guys are doing. It's a, you guys are a big part of the safety of Turpin Springs and I know we really count on you all for all the daily calls you receive. So thanks for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, and Commissioner Carr, before I, I turn it over to some of my questions, uh, you offered to go a little bit more in-depth about that, um, possible other payment option. Do you mind?
Sure. Uh, based on what the finance director talked about is the percentage between using the unassigned funds, um, and we're, the city's earning around two point oh five percent versus the actual cost of the loan itself that through PNC would be about forty-plus thousand dollars. So the question that the board has to ask is, is it worth forty-plus thousand dollars to keep an additional million dollars in the unassigned funds, which is about a twelfth of the unassigned funds? Or does it make sense to the city pay itself forty thousand dollars somewhere back to the unassigned funds? Or we could put that back into general funds or something along those lines for another project? And, um, be the bank ourselves using the unassigned funds? Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, thank you again for the presentation. Um, I just got a few more questions as well. And I definitely agree with Commissioner Carr in that, um, not only should we keep track of the calls, where the ladder truck is going, but also specifically how many times the ladder truck is being used as far as the ladder feature goes. Uh, my question was, we, we keep saying ladder truck? My question was, we keep saying ladder truck. Are there different lengths of ladders on these ladder trucks? Like, in comparison to a standard truck ladder, are there different lengths as far as the heights go of a ladder truck? Or is it one set ladder piece?
No, there's different heights. They come from fifty-foot up to, I think they just recently, one-ten, and I think there's some out there about one-fifty. I'm not going up on a one-fifty.
Okay.
So, but this one will be one-hundred-and-ten foot.
One-hundred-and-ten? And what's the cost difference compared to one-hundred-and-ten feet to say, I don't know, like ninety feet?
I don't have that number.
Okay.
I can give you the cost differences of some other trucks that have been purchased, if that's what you're asking.
No, you're just saying the standard trucks, you mean?
Yeah.
That are like six hundred thousand.
Well, that's like a standard, that's just an engine. Like, our, the engine without a ladder on top is about six hundred thousand, or today. So the ladder trucks are running around a million to a million and a half.
Okay. And then, when I first saw the ladder truck, I initially assumed that it was just taking care of these high-storied buildings. So when I say that, I mean the hospital, tarpon towers, and the hotel off of US nineteen, because those were the only buildings I could think of that were high-storied buildings. But then you brought to my attention that a ladder truck can also be used through different firefighting techniques, like for an average house fire. Do you mind elaborating on that a little?
Well, sure. And an average house fire, just a single-family home, the ladder truck is always positioned, or we try to get it there depending on the roads, as close to the house as we can. If the house fire continues to grow, today's house fires burn a lot faster, a lot hotter because of the products we use in our homes today. So they can get out of control quick. So if that happens, we have to back people out of the house and we have to usually set the ladder truck up to be able to put water on top of the house and get it out quickly or protect the surrounding homes. So it's a lot of, it produces a lot of water.
Okay. And then what's the actual difference in response time compared to if we need to call upon Palm Harbor? Or let's say they're busy when we call on them, we got to use, say, Clear Waters. Is there kind of a number or a difference in response time?
If we, if our ladder truck is out and we have to expect the next truck in from either Palm Harbor, we're probably looking at five to ten minutes increased response time. If their ladder truck is out and not available, we would move, the computer would move down to Dunedin or Clearwater. So you're looking at another fifteen, maybe twenty minutes. And in our world, that's a lot of time.
Yeah, absolutely. And then is the maintenance done? Like, I know the statistic about how often it's been in maintenance. Is the maintenance done in-house? So like, when it's up for maintenance, are you guys doing it inside of the fire station we have? Or does it have to go somewhere to get maintained?
The fleet maintenance department has a mechanic who's EVTI, emergency vehicle technician certified. He does the majority of the work on our trucks. Our trucks are maintained based on NFPA standards. They are done on a three-month, six-month, nine-month, and twelve-month rotation. So each month of that is done, different things are done. And then like the twelve-month is a huge service, goes through everything, double checks everything. But they do the majority of the work, unless it is a major work, they might have to send it out to an outside vendor.
Okay. My concern is just that the outside vendor might be super far away and then that's just adding more miles.
Yes.
Okay. And then, this one you might not know offhand, but how many quotes for the different potential makes and models, I guess, of a ladder truck did we get? And I know you'd express that maybe that this brand, I guess, of ladder trucks is, in your experience, superior to the other ones.
We feel that the Pierce ladder, Pierce fire engines are the top-of-the-line engines. They are the biggest manufacturer of fire apparatus in the country. We've had good luck with them in the past. The city went away from them, away from Pierce a couple of times and we did not fare well. In fact, the ladder truck that we are replacing is not a Pierce. So we were comfortable going with them. We felt we got a good price on it. I checked around and Pinellas Park had just recently purchased a truck in two thousand sixteen and paid one point five million dollars for their truck. Dunedin got a truck last year, an E-one, and they paid one point three million dollars last year for a similar ladder truck to ours. So I think we've got a good price. We also went through the Sourcewell contract, so we got a better price that way through Pierce.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Can you tell us, how long does it take to prepare the truck and get it ready before it goes into the surface?
Once it's ordered, it'll take ten to eleven months to be delivered. After that, after we get it, the training that the personnel will go through will probably take, probably at least a month. I'm guessing about a month to get them all through the training. There's a lot of things to learn about these trucks. Every time you get a new one, they all have their little intricacies that you have to learn and we want to make sure they're proficient in them before we send them up there.
Thank you. I want to thank you, I want to thank all the people that you have involved designing the truck. But also, I'd like to thank Mr. Herring for coming up with this clever way to do the financing. Just to answer the question Commissioner Carr had about financing through the emergency fund to save us eight thousand dollars a year, I will not support that. Emergency fund is designed there for hurricanes, for bad weather, and we are living in the area that's prone to the hurricane, saving for eight thousand dollars a year, I don't think it's worth, in my opinion. Any other question? Vice Mayor?
I'll just wrap it up and I'm prepared to make a motion. Again, Chief, I want to thank you for your preparedness.
Did you go to the public comments?
Okay, that's fine. Real quick, though, again, Commissioner Carr touched on a couple of things. You mentioned the ISO points more than once, and I'm curious, that has, that relates to insurability, is that right? ISO points?
The ISO rating has to do with insurance rates in the city.
Right.
They, they look, and I don't know how the insurance companies look at it, but they look at what the rating is and they go by a scale, I'm sure, and what the insurance rates in that area should be or that municipality. So the lower our ISO rating, the better for the community.
Right. Right, got it. Not tonight or in the near future, but as we continue to discuss about like insurability and what the tangible and intangible benefit of that is, that would be interesting, you know, rated out of three, rated out of four, what the difference in insurability is as we talk about values. And then also, something was mentioned about some intergovernmental contributions. And I think you did have a slide up there that showed a value of like a hundred and five from Pinellas County for unincorporated areas that we service. So I think that that's also important to mention.
Yeah, thank you. And it's not on the calculation, by the way, it's not calculated.
It was, it was on a previous slide.
Yeah, it was highlighted, but it was not calculated into the total. Good point, good point, thank you. Any other comments? Are there any public comments on this item? I need a motion?
Moved to approve.
And roll call, please.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tara Paney? Mayor LaHusus?
Yes, thank you. Well, tonight, we have a long agenda, we're going to take a short break and we'll be right back. Thank you.
Sorry.
Of course not.
The lease documents.
Uh huh.
City manager's supposed to sign, I was like, I'll just do it with him tomorrow.
Yeah, and then Tom, I know he's supposed to... He has the opinion letter, he said he wasn't going to sign it until the resolution passed, right? So he'll, as soon as the city manager signs it, and then he'll sign the, the opinion letter. And then he said that they'll FedEx it over.
I'll feel FedExed.
I don't know if we will or, he said, it would be FedExed over, so... Yeah. I want it all together, yeah.
Meeting at eight fifty-three PM. Item number twenty-four, it's a resolution two thousand nineteen dash twelve, application nineteen twenty-four. Conditional years, Steve Corrado, this is a quasi-judicial.
Resolution two thousand nineteen dash twelve, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application nineteen dash twenty-four, requesting conditional use approval to establish a light industrial use, namely, a test distillery in an existing building located at three twenty-one North Safford Avenue in the T four C residential high zoning district, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. As the mayor stated, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, as are items number twenty-six and number twenty-seven on the agenda. I will announce the quasi-judicial procedure and then swear in all speakers on all those applications. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the commission acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The commission may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any members of the commission wishing to disclose any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest regarding application or items number twenty-four, twenty-six, or twenty-seven this evening?
Excuse me, it's twenty-five, not twenty-seven.
I do apologize, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-seven.
I rode around with the Housing Authority's, uh, director, just to, to look at the Housing Authority areas, and she gave me a copy of the site plan, nothing different than what we've received from staff. So that was the only communications I've had with the Housing Authority.
Yeah, I did as well.
Separately?
Separately.
Okay. I was afraid to ask the question. Uh, okay. Um, and no other ex parte communications or conflicts of interest from any other members. Okay, any wishing, anybody wishing to speak this evening on items number twenty-four, twenty-five, or twenty-seven, if you could please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So sworn. Staff presentation?
Thank you. Heather Earler, planning and zoning director and staff to this application. Again, this application is a conditional use application for building, um, on Saff- at three twenty-one North Safford Avenue. Essentially, what the applicant is requesting is the ability to use the building for a light industrial use. They're specifically looking to do a test distillery, which essentially allows them to test different, um, distilled liqueurs or different distilled alcoholic beverages to get their recipes correct before they move forward into a, a full-on production mode. So this is the first stage in the process. And so, in order to use this building for a light industrial use in the, in the district that it's in, which is the T four C transect zone, uh, they would, they have to come through this conditional use process. Um, and again, this is a, an artisan craft distillery, um, they're in small batch, uh, distillery, they're not going to be doing massive, uh, production level even with, when they ramp up, if they ramp up to production level in this facility. It is possible that this may be just a test facility, that's something that they're going to have to, as they kind of grow with their product, decide whether this is gonna be the right facility. But there is room in this building, they're gonna be using a portion of the building, and should the building be available, uh, the entire building, they could expand into the larger building should the need arise for them as they move into production. Uh, with that, I'm gonna go through the standards for review. Uh, this is pursuant to section two oh nine point zero one, is, which is your review standards for conditional uses. Um, essentially, it's a conformance with the requirements of the land development code, and this is consistent with the land development code. However, the project is actually in the special area plan, we still look to the land development code for provisions for compatibility and for consistency with the surrounding land uses. Um, adjacent to this building is actually going to be the old Pistachios Building, that's actually going to be turning in, into a brewery. Uh, that's the brighter days, I believe brewery. Um, they are actually gonna be ramping up production, um, and moving forward with that. So you're not in a, in an area where this particular use is not already occurring. In that particular building, that particular building already had light industrial uses in it in the past, so they're just transitioning from one use to another. Um, the next standard of review is the use in which the property may be put is appropriate to the property in question and compatible with existing and planned uses of the area it is. This is a, your, your special area plan is really intended to have a mix of uses. We're not really concerned at this level that this distillery is going to have any other issues. We've had really good luck with the brew pubs and the breweries and the distilleries that we are, have worked worth up to this point, and then locating in that, um, downtown area and doing, um, small-scale production. Again, these are craft industries, we're not talking about big giant breweries and distilleries, we're talking about people who are doing this on small scale. Um, the conditional use is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. There is no, there is no inconsistency here, they are, they are consistent with all of the, uh, provisions of your, of your, um, city's comprehensive plan. The conditional use will not result in significant adverse effects to the environmental or historic resources. This particular building is not a historic building, and since everything's gonna be done inside, uh, there's no, there's really no impact on the district as a whole. Um, the conditional use will not adversely affect adjoining property values, there's no anticipated, again, the use of, for this building has already been, uh, used as warehouse and a couple of other uses. There's other buildings in the, in the area that are also used for the same types of uses, so there is no anticipated property value, um, depreciation as a result of this application. The conditional use will not adversely impact nor exceed the capacity of fiscal ability of the city to provide for available public facilities, including transportation, water, sewer, solid waste drainage, recreational education, fire protection, library services, and other similar public facilities. This site is already served by all of the facility, all, all of our utilities at this point. Um, there, it's gonna be limited scale, because again, they're doing testing, they're not gonna be using a huge volume of, um, the facilities that we, that we do have there. So there should be with that, there should be limited impacts, um, to this facility. And again, the final criteria is the conditional use shall provide for efficient and orderly development can, uh, considering the impacts upon growth patterns and the cost for the city to provide public facilities. And again, the proposed distillery is an acceptable, desirable, adaptable use for that existing building. Um, it supports the efficiency and orderly, um, development within the special area plan, and it actually puts a facility or a portion of a facility back into, um, active use, which is something that we're seeking all the time to get those buildings that we do have, that have vacancies, um, reoccupied. So this is a, a good fit, um, for this particular building. And staff is recommending approval of the distillery, um, and approval of resul- resolution two thousand nineteen twelve with the following conditions. The conditional use will expire within one year of approval if a building permit is not issued for the property. The occupied space in the building shall be brought into compliance, uh, with applicable building and fire codes, and the existing handicap space shall be brought into compliance with the code. So the only real code concern we have is just that the handicap accessibility for the site be maintained, and the handicap space is a little substandard, so it needs to be addressed as part of their development. And with that, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions of staff?
Yes, I'd like to ask a question. Uh, in my opinion, I think they meet the criteria for, uh, conditioning use. I just have a question, being that this is a distillery, and it will produce an alcohol, do they need any additional permits to be able to operate?
Um, the, they do need additional permits, um, from us as far as the conditional use for, uh, any consumption of alcoholic beverages, which is done through the administrative conditional use process. It's the next step. We have to make sure that they are consistent, and we deem them consistent as a community at this particular level, before they can move forward with any of the additional approvals. Because they're going to be selling t-shirts and that type of thing, they'll actually have business tax license, which is sitting in my office waiting to be moved forward. So they're already in the process of getting some of the permits and the materials that they're going to need together to move to the next stage.
Mr. Tier- Vice Mayor Tierpenny?
Thank you.
Uh, Heather, I'm a little confused on why they're even, why they even need to apply for the conditional use. I mean, if the property is located in an area where light industrial is, uh, permitted use by right.
It's not permitted use by right, it's permitted by conditional use, so that you can evaluate, um, when we did, this transect was, um, uh, changed for another building adjacent to it that was going to become a brewery, so that they could do a, a larger operation. So when we did that, we did that by conditional use, so you could evaluate each one of the buildings if they converted over to this particular use.
Light industrial is not permitted?
It's not a permitted use, only by conditional use approval.
And then, uh, in regard to the three hundred and thirty-five square feet, do you have any idea what the balance of the building's gonna be used for?
Uh, the balance of the building, I believe, is used for warehouse and office at this point, um, which is, which is allowed. It used to be the whole baseball academy years ago, but that, that's kind of gone the, gone to the wayside, and they've been using the facility for a number of different uses. We've had some issues with some of the uses that have gone into this building. So this is one of the, this is one of those things that we're happy to see, that the owner's been able to find a use that's consistent, even if it has to come through the conditional use process to be consistent, um, because some of the uses that have been in there haven't been consistent.
So the conditional use is only for three hundred and thirty-five square feet, not the property in its entirety?
That's correct.
How do you regulate that?
Well, they provided, um, a floor plan, I believe. Let me see if it's in here. But it would be based on, it's basically regulated based on their, um, I think that there's a floor plan here. It's basically going to be based on the lease agreement for the space that they have in the building. There isn't a floor plan here, and they didn't lay that out for us, unfortunately.
I think I see it.
I think that this is meant to be their site design with the inside of the building. It's kind of a little hard to. Again, because they're going to need to modify, do some modifications to the building, they're gonna have to submit for the building permit at that time. That's how we'll, we'll define that area in the building. But it'll be based on what their, what their lease agreement is with their landlord at this point.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Carr?
Uh, I've just got one further clarification question. Um, I know the applicants mentioned that it's more of a test, um, facility, if they move to more of a permanent, mm, like, more similar to like what a brewery or a distillery would look like in other parts of town. Do that come back for additional conditional use, or is this conditional?
That will be an expansion of, into the larger buildings, so yes, at that time, they would have to expand into this building, or if they choose a different building, if it's a use by right, fine, if not, then they'll have to get another additional conditional use.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Any other questions?
Uh, yeah, this is just something I'm curious of, 'cause it's, it's interesting, it's unique. Um, they mentioned their branding ideas to reflect sponge diving and a lot of, uh, Tarpon Springs history. Um, I was just curious, do you know how they're gonna do that, or what their plans?
The applicants are here, if you'd like to talk to them, that would be something specific to their, their business model, so they can, they can speak to that if you'd like to talk to them about that.
Okay, no, I was, I was just curious.
It's not something that we would condition normally to the application, so it's not something that we would look at.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Um, would the applicant make, like to make a presentation? And Mr. Corrado, I, I swore you last night, did you get sworn in this evening?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. Steve Corrado, Ada Street. Um, mayor, commissioners, thank you. Um, to answer your question, uh, mayor, uh, we have to, once we get approved for this conditional use, we have to make application to both the state and the federal government for our, um, distilling license. Now, even though we'll, the distilling license is not defined specifically for testing, it, it, it's, we fall under the same, uh, requirements. So we will, all we'll be doing at this site is developing our brand and, uh, our recipes. Then we'll turn around and submit those recipes and branding back to the federal government for approval. Once we obtain that approval, if we're fortunate enough to do so, then, uh, we will, uh, as phase two of this business plan, we will, uh, look for, um, a suitable site to build a legitimate craft distillery. It may be in this site, or, or this site may not be, it may be, uh, occupied, um, the other, the other portion of the building that we don't, we haven't leased. Um, so that remains to be seen. But, um, that, that's our, that's our business plan moving forward.
Are there any questions of the applicant? Vice Mayor?
Just out of curiosity, the, the, this specific site, given that you had to apply for a conditional use, and it's only three hundred and thirty-five square feet, uh, just out of curiosity, why was this a site that attracted?
Well, um, yeah, a number of reasons. One, it's difficult to find, uh, a small space for our needs, uh, that, that would be suitable, that would fall under the requirements. Um, we looked at several different sites, um, in the last six months. This one seemed to be the most suitable with the least amount of, um, uh, investment for what we need to do to create a laboratory environment there and meet all the codes.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Uh, yeah, what do you suggest to, like, branding ideas just for Tarpon Springs and the spongers?
Well, our, our theme is going to be based on the heritage of Tarpon Springs. Uh, as a craft distillery, uh, we're gonna utilize, uh, many local ingredients as possible, but we're gonna have to actually bring product in from throughout the, the entire world to build our product, um, because there's some ingredients that can't be found elsewhere. Uh, but the theme and the heritage of Tarpon Springs, uh, with regards to the sponge diving and the working waterfront, all kind of falls into play with, uh, the type of products that we want to develop.
Okay, awesome, thanks.
Is your product gonna be uzo?
Yes.
Really?
We couldn't do this in Tarpon Springs without, but it, I'll tell you, the, the uzo's gonna be very elegant. All our products are gonna be totally organic, they're going to be top shelf, and I hope that they'll be the best uzo you ever had.
Good.
Any other questions of the applicant? Does the applicant have any more statements you'd like to make?
No, thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
Are there any member, any affected parties, or any members of the public wishing to speak in favor of this application? Any affected parties looking to speak against this application? Any final comments from staff or the applicant?
Not at this time.
No, thank you.
Then I will go ahead and close the public hearing.
Okay. Any, uh, commission comments, questions?
I just think it's a nice compliment to all our other businesses here locally.
Any other comments? Steve, good luck to you. Chair, will detain a motion?
Motion to approve, uh, based on staff recommendations for the conditional use.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tierpenny?
Yes.
Mayor on this.
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number twenty-five, this is a resolution two thousand nineteen dash eleven, application nineteen zero five, Tarpon Springs Housing Authority Eagle Ridge Site Plan, this is also quasi judicial. City Attorney will read the title and ex- you already explained the process.
I did. Resolution two thousand nineteen dash eleven, a resolution of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number nineteen dash zero five, requesting site plan approval for Tarpon Springs Housing Authority to redevelop an existing multifamily development, including construction of seventy-one apartment units in seven buildings, and construction of a four thousand eight hundred seventy square foot clubhouse located on nine point four acres of land at seven twenty-one Mango Circle in the residential multifamily RM dash fifteen zoning district, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. Staff presentation?
Thank you. Again, Heather Earler, planning and zoning director and staff to this application. The request here is to, uh, to replace the multifamily, um, development owned as the Mango Circle Apartments. They're currently consist of sixty-one dwelling units, um, with a new multifamily development of seventy-one development units and a, and a clubhouse. Uh, essentially, this is going to be a complete, um, tear down and renovation of the property. This actually is a companion application to the vacate that you'll see, um, again, for second read tonight. Um, essentially, that vacation has to occur in order for this development to move forward. Um, again, really what is occurring here is a renovation. The Housing Authority was able to finally secure, um, their housing, uh, grant money and put together this project, and staff's been working with the Housing Authority, um, off and on for the better part of a year to kind of develop this application and move through the process and, and develop all of the, or, uh, address all of the issues that need to be addressed, uh, for this to move forward. Uh, the, essentially, the project is consistent with the future land use, the residential urban, um, future land use category, and the comprehensive plan. The zoning criteria is RM fifteen, and the request is consistent with the RM fifteen, uh, multifamily, uh, residential, uh, zoning district. Um, the site plan pro- procedures and standards are, are found in section two ten oh three of your land development code. As part of that process, the, the city submits this, uh, project, or my department submits this project to the technical review team, and the technical review team reviewed this on February seventh, two thousand nine. They actually reviewed it in a series of different meetings, that was the last of those meetings, um, and essentially worked through many of the issues related to development. Um, the, this is definitely consistent with our land development code and our comprehensive plan, where the project's proposing minimal new impacts, the, essentially, the facility that exists there, we're talking a difference of ten units, um, with a different configuration. Um, the king, it's consistent with the city's concurrency management standards, and the project will be required and expected to be able to meet all the standards of the city's building codes and fire codes. Um, with that, it's consistent with the level of services analysis which is provided, um, in the staff report, and staff is recommending approval of the application for site plan approval consistent with the applicable review criteria, uh, with the following conditions. Developers are responsible for meeting the minimum criteria of the land development code and for acquiring all jurisdictional permits and approvals. Construction plans shall be consistent with the approved site plan. All requisite fees attendant to the project shall be paid in accordance with the land development. All requisite fees attendant to the project shall be paid in accordance with the Land Development Code. The applicant shall provide for road connection to Mango Circle in conformance with city standards. Water and sewer, water and wastewater utilities shall be privately owned and maintained. The site plan shall expire at one year from the effective date unless the applicant, the application has been filed with the, for building permit with the construction plan signed and sealed by a registered engineer licensed in the state of Florida. And I would add one additional condition because of the way that we're adopting this, that the site plan is dependent upon the, the vacate passing. So the vacation for Mango Circle on your agenda will need to be passed in order for this to move forward. With that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff?
I've got a quick question.
Mr. Carr?
Did I jump, you mayor?
Uh, no, go ahead, because I like to ask questions of the applicant.
Okay. I don't know if, Heather, you can answer this, maybe Mark, you can answer this one. And when you look at the plans, there's a portion of Mango Circle that's not being planned and being vacated. I'm not sure if the city's responsible for this part of the road or if the Housing Authority is gonna be updating this part of the road. But I know we have the Mears project that's currently been designed. So I wanted to discuss the actual roads themselves, and forgive me, I don't know the name of the road, but if you go just west of the road, there's a, of Mango Circle, there's a road that runs north and south that runs straight into what Mears is gonna be. Is that Diston? I think it's actually one, yeah, it's one east of Diston. The property looks like there's currently houses on the property that aren't going to be replaced in that piece of the property. Has the city looked at, I'm, I'm not saying this elegantly, has the city looked at moving Mango Circle over to connect the roads instead of having multiple roads coming into Mears at different parts right next to each other? Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Yes, do you want me to handle that one? Okay. So the alignment of Mango Circle, or main, what's, what's gonna be left of Mango Circle, when it stops at the church's property, it will still be city property. It's, it's city right of way right now, it'll remain city right of way. Part of the issue that we would have with trying to align it is the church itself needs to have access. And it doesn't have access, I believe, on that adjacent property. I don't really know, because I haven't really gone over there to look, but I don't believe that their property goes all the way over to that other block. I think that they are just four, five, and six, if I remember correctly. So the reason why we even are keeping that section of right of way is to provide for the church itself. I can't tell if they use, I don't know if they use maybe a couple of these lots for access to the other roadway, but that's really the reason why the preservation was of Mango Circle was really to preserve that right of way access, because essentially they're an island. Everything around them is owned by the Housing Authority. So until that property is either acquired by the Housing Authority, we want to provide access to them. And I'm not sure if they actually have lots that butt up to the other street.
I agree with you. So let me just pull this up and get the correct name of the road for everybody. So it's North Avenue? I would like to ask the city, because if you align North Avenue and Mango Circle together, you would create ultimately a four-way stop or something along those lines instead of having two roads coming into Mears at a short intervals of each other.
Yeah, under, I mean, this is again, is where we, that's something that's could, could be looked at. I don't know if the, it has, because I know that there is property that was acquired, I believe, along North Avenue. Mark, you know this better than me for the drainage.
Yeah, Bob Robertson, that project, I believe, we looked at it with a stormwater, it's gotta be done. And I don't think we were able to align it, but I can get Bob Robertson to get back to you, because that was looked in the design of the road to try to, if there was any way to match that up and, and do that, so.
I know we had talks on how we could kind of make the roadways better here, because what we don't have on the other side of things is the roads all the way connecting through here. We have a bunch of roads that are just not aligned and trying to bring that road through there. It's just, it's very inconsistent and difficult. I know he was trying to work on that. I don't know if he found any feasible way for it to happen.
Okay, I just want to make sure we looked at this from a safety standpoint and vetting it out. So it, with this site plan, it doesn't look like they're planning on building additional houses out there. So if there's an opportunity now to, to look at it again, I would like to recommend staff look at it a little bit further and maybe work with the police chief to talk about how the, the risk of the safety, what safeties, if it's increasing the risk of accidents or if it, what, exactly what happened.
I think in the design of, of our portion of the road from Mears, that, that is one of the things being looked at. So I'll make sure.
Okay, great, thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Any other questions of staff?
Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
Heather, why, I mean, I'm assuming because it's a non-for-profit, but why is the applicant not having to adhere to the public art ordinance?
They will have to adhere to the, they are a non-profit, so they fit that seam, into that same niche that kind of the city does. It's just an exemption into your, in your ordinance that really lets them fit into that same kind of cri, criteria that a church would fit into, that any kind of institutional use fits into. It just, it, the criteria was written kind of vaguely to provide for, I don't know if you want to say a loophole, but to provide for very specific language on what types of uses that you're going to charge for. This one is not one.
There's an ordinance to that effect?
It's in the, give me one second, I'll grab the book.
I, I mentioned it while you're looking for that. I mentioned it because it's, it's in the backup that the, the project is exempt from the public art ordinance. And, you know, literally in, in two meetings, we're talking about two major projects that are missed opportunities for that. And I think, you know, on our behalf, as it relates to the cemetery, that's something that we might, as a board, revisit. But I mean, you know, that's two projects in back-to-back meetings that have been, in theory, exempt from the public art ordinance. And I just want to make sure that this one, given it's affordable housing, with the nature of, you know, whoever the applicant is or the developer is, that it is truly exempt, and we're not just here on the side of caution.
So we looked at it, that it's not a purely residential project because of the fact that they are a non-for-profit, just as the city would be. I'm sorry, I can't, I can't see, I can't like read and see at the same time. And essentially, what the, what the 296 of the Art Design Standard states is all projects and developments consisting of new construction or renovations related to commercial, industrial, mixed-use projects, developments, and residential projects and developments with a specific exception of renovation to or development of individual, single-family lots are hereby exempted from the regulations of this ordinance. So that's how we, we looked at it, is the same, they have this, they meet the same criteria in this particular, in this particular situation because of the fact that it's the Housing Authority.
But where did it say that in the ordinance about a non-for-profit?
It, it doesn't, but it, it's very specific where it says commercial. We don't, it's the same way that we look at the city projects, they're institutional uses. I mean, it's an institution that's actually providing that use. So that's the reason why we looked at it.
Do you have a copy of that ordinance that I could review as we're talking about this? Or is there somewhere in the backup a page you could direct me to?
Send you write this down, it's A.
Okay, thank you.
296A.
Are there any additional questions for staff?
Yes, I'd like to, well, this is a project that we really need to provide housing to, to many people. We're gonna have 71 apartments at one clubhouse. Looking the site plan, I really didn't see, I know we got a clubhouse, but I didn't see any really recreation or any playground for the kids. Do we have any plans for that?
I could have the applicant speak to that if you'd like to.
Are there any questions for staff before the applicant? Before the applicant makes his presentation? Would the applicant like to make their presentation?
Good evening, Brian Evian with North Star Development, 3629 Matic Lane in Tampa. I'm with North Star Development, we're the developer partner with the Housing Authority. We do have a, what we call a tot lot and a play area adjacent to the clubhouse. It's, I don't know how specifically it's identified on the site plan. It's called a community open space, but we will typically have a play structure in that area. We like to have it in view of the clubhouse and close to the male kiosk so that the families can kind of congregate there.
You're gonna include a playground for the kid?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Mr. Carr?
Yeah, I've got something that may seem petty, but this is something that we're looking at across the cities. Your street signs, as far as stop signs that you put in your community that you're planning on developing, the city's recently have, and made an investment through the historic district and parts of towns to put a powder-coated, black-framed stop signs in areas. And I know, based on riding with Robin around to the other areas, there's a lot of pride in the way these facilities look. For the street signs that you all are going to be installing in the development, is that something you'd be interested, or would be willing to do is match these types of signs that are, look a little bit better, obviously would look, make your development look a little bit better. It's in the details, obviously, right? Don't want to sound petty, but it really does make a difference, I think, overall.
I don't know what we have specked at this time. We would certainly be willing to look at that. But we, I mean, obviously, we have to consider that in the grand scheme of the, the entire development budget. I mean, I don't know how they compare cost-wise, but we'd certainly look at that.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Yeah, this is actually just a comment, but just riding around with Executive Director Robin Redd, I was just so impressed with your guys' work, the site plan. I mean, this is really a need that we're filling in the best possible way. So I really appreciate all the work that you guys do. My main concern whenever we're vacating a place like this is the current residents that are living there. And to find out that you guys are literally working with them one-on-one, holding their hand through the process, it's just fantastic work that you guys are doing, so thank you very much.
Any other questions of the applicant?
I have a question of the applicant, but I would like to have a question for staff. So I'm, I'm reading this ordinance, and maybe I'm missing something, but I don't see anything that says that we shouldn't charge this applicant for a public art, or they don't adhere to the public art ordinance, I don't see that.
Well, we just looked at it that they're an institutional use, kind of like we're an institutional use. So that's the reason why we've made that call. Certainly, the board.
It doesn't say anything about institutional uses being exempt in this, in this ordinance.
But it doesn't specifically determine what those uses, what, what uses are. It talks about commercial, industrial, mixed-use and residential, so.
This is residential, right?
It, it is a residential use, but again, we're looking at them as the same way we look at the city uses, that they're, they're providing an institutional use. It's certainly, we can put a condition on that they would have to meet the public art ordinance, if that's the board's.
I just don't see anything that directly says institutional uses are exempt from the public art.
It's not specific, but it's just the way the language is written. It's written very specific to the types of uses that you're, that you're, that you're looking at.
You're absolutely right, it says residential.
Essentially, we just assume that if they're not covered in that list, that those uses are exempt. So that's the assumption that staff goes on.
And again, that is something we can look at if you, if we want to clarify the code. No, but that's just how we've interpreted it the whole time. It'd be a change in the way we interpret it since the art ordinance has been, but we can add that.
I don't think it needs any other interpretation. It doesn't say anything about institutional uses being exempt from the public art ordinance. And it says that all projects and developments consisting of new construction or renovation related to commercial, industrial, mixed-use projects and developments and residential projects and developments with specific exceptions, renovations to development or individual, single-family residential, blah, blah, blah. Doesn't say, this is a residential development, right? Doesn't say anything about institutional uses being exempt. I mean, it's like when we cut a tree down, we try and hold ourselves to the same standards that we do another independent, private applicant. I don't see any reason why this applicant shouldn't adhere to the public art. I mean, if they're for a reason, I mean, unless you can tell me.
Well, again, I don't think we've held, held the other projects that they've done that might have qualified for that. I mean, that's, that's the way, that's the way we've done. It may be residential, but it's also institutional, so that's how we've interpreted it. And again, I would say that if we wanted to change that and make that specific, that we make it.
We just make a condition that would basically say they need to meet the public art ordinance. And, and that, add that to the site, add that to the site plan. And then that interpretation going forward would be what this board determines as it to be.
I would just say that I don't see any reason for us not to have the applicant adhere to the public art ordinance. I mean, that's the ordinance right there, the balance of the board is welcome to read it. But for me to support this tonight, that'll have to be included. Everybody knows where I'm at.
Gosh, I was hoping you weren't gonna ask me. I, I, as far as the plain language of the ordinance, it does say all projects and developments, and it only has one specific exemption, which is renovations to or development of individual, single-family residential lots. So I would read it to say any other projects would be, would have to adhere to the public art ordinance except for those specific exemptions. I don't read any indus, or institutional use into that. So I think from the plain language of the ordinance, they would have to adhere to the public art ordinance. But then again, you know, that's my.
Legal interpretation?
My legal interpretation of the plain language of the ordinance.
Are there any other questions for the staff or the applicant? Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in favor of this application? I can swear you in when you get to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Tommy Frain, 1671 Autumn Wood Street, Tarpon Springs.
Can you please raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Obviously, in favor of affordable housing, everything mainly came up, because I'm a little troubled with the comment that the city should always hold itself to the same standard as private applicants or some institution, or why would we not give some credence to this? It's because this is providing affordable housing to people that need it. So you're increasing the cost of affordable housing for our public art ordinance. It seems kind of redundant, because it's all coming from public funds, essentially, no matter how the, however the Housing Authority raised the funds, whether that's through issuing some kind of debt, getting the grants, some kind of combination thereof. But I believe that's kind of the point of what the city has been operating off of is, why would we charge ourselves, essentially? And even though the Housing Authority, I understand, is not the city in a separate governed, but the point is affordable housing. So I, I, I agree. It's good when we want to make sure that the city is not abusing certain things, right? You know, cutting down trees left and right because we're the city and we can do it. But I also don't see the point in raising a project's cost, especially when the funds are gonna be, are ultimately borne on the public generally. So that was my comment, so. But I do, and also I agree that, I, I think the ordinance is relatively vague, because I do, it, it gives an exemption, but it also says related to, and then has a list. So that's a little confusing, so, thank you.
Actually, and to piggyback off of that, as I'm reading through the ordinance, I was only looking at section A, and I think Vice Mayor Terri Penny is correct. It's pretty clear. But if you go down and read the ordinance section as a whole, section C says excluded from this requirement shall be, and number two says residential developments of, of new construction for affordable housing. So that's kind of a moot point, because while section A is very, to me, very clear that there's no exemption in there except for that single line, subsection C is very clear that affordable housing projects are excluded from the public art ordinance, so.
As long as it's been there, I have.
It is in there.
Affordable housing, conceptually. I'd just like to make sure that, that we act to the same standard that we act, other, ask other people to act to. That's plain and simple. I mean, I don't want to ask a private developer to adhere to an ordinance that the city or a non-for-profit's not gonna adhere to if it says that they have to adhere to it. If they said that their institutional use doesn't have to adhere, that's fine.
Correct, so, yeah, reading, reading the ordinance as a whole, there is a specific exemption in subsection three that's not addressed in section A.
If you want to pass this down, yeah, it's, it's right under C.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wishing to speak against the application? Seeing no one, we will go ahead and close the public hearing.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments? If not, I will detain the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. Thank you. Item number 26 is the ordinance 2019-06. This is the application 1927. LTC Amendment, Street Vacation Fee. This is the second reading. City Attorney, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2019-06, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending section 216 of Article 12 of Appendix A, the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, by removing the requirement for calculation of the application fee based on land valuation and retaining the standard application fee of $200, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. This was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on March 22nd, 2019.
Do we have staff before?
Um, yeah, essentially, since last week, what's been added is, actually, there's been no additional items added on this, sorry. This is the same application and the same information from the last hearing.
Okay. Well, we had a very clear explanation from the City Attorney the last time we met, so. Are there any commission comments? Vice Mayor Terapini?
Uh, I just think, Mayor, since I had some passionate testimony about this last time, I think I'll continue it only because there was such a great example on our agenda item tonight as it relates to the Beckett Bridge. And the county, we're going to, the county's going to spend a million and a half to acquire some right-of-way, right? Okay, so it's nice to have a fund where we can go to for right-of-way monies. So, you know, there, there is value in the right-of-way as we vacate right-of-ways around town. And when we vacate the right-of-way, the fee that we used to charge pending this application, or this ordinance gets approved tonight, helps fund new right-of-way reservation, new right-of-way purchases, et cetera. So it's just ironic that we have an example on tonight's agenda where there's going to be some acquisition of right-of-way that's going to be in the sum of a million and a half bucks. So for me, I still don't like to change this ordinance to make the application 200 when I feel like there's huge amounts of value as it relates to density or intensity with additional land in the form of right-of-ways. So I think this is a mistake, and that's all I have to say.
Well, Vice Mayor Terapini, I agree with you. For 29 years, we were doing that, but it was discovered that, by the City Attorney, that we do not have the powers to do the charging, so I have a concern with that too. Not being able to defend ourselves if we have to go to litigation. I, I understand that because we're doing it for so long now, we can, based on the information that we got, so.
Yeah, I'd also like to add that not only is it wise legally, but also it's my understanding that due to grant implications and funding implications for the Mango Circle project, that if we didn't do this and we required them to pay what it was originally, they would have to scrap the entire project and they wouldn't be able to do it.
City Attorney, can I ask a recommendation that, can you clarify that this shouldn't be, or can you make, help me understand? We shouldn't be looking at this as a single source project, so we're going to change a code because of one project. Am I correct in saying that? Because based on my conversation.
That project came forth and actually alerted the city to this section of the code and was brought to the city attorney's office for review. But we, the commission is not looking to change, and the city attorney's recommendation is not to change it because of this project, but that because of this project it came to our attention, and a research was done to show that, that the fee needs to be a nominal fee. It cannot be, you cannot basically be selling these types of things. You're charging a fee. Based on, and I, and I know that you all received Mr. Ushenfelder's very detailed legal memo in the last agenda packet, so.
So we're looking at it as a policy and not as a single application?
Correct. Right, this is an ordinance change not for a specific project. It just happened to be that the project brought that to our attention.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other commission comment? Are there any public comments on this item? Here, none? Any public comments on this item? I will detain the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Carr, I'm sorry, Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
No.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. Next is item number 27, the ordinance 2019-07, the application 1907, Tarpon Springs Housing Authority Eagle Ridge Vacation of Mango Circle. This is a second reading. City Attorney, if you please read, read the ordinance. This is also part of the addition.
Ordinance number 2019-07, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, vacating and abandoning right-of-way for 1.057 acres of Mango Circle lying within the vacated blocks of the Lake Butler Heights subdivision as follows. Block B, lots 17 to through 20, lots, block C, lots 7 through 10, block F, lots 1 through 9, block G, lots 1, 2, 8, 9, 11, 18, and 19, and block H, 12 through 19, providing for conditions provided for findings, providing for proposed and future easements, providing for recrodation in the public records of Pinellas County, and providing for an effective date. Staff presentation.
Yeah, so again, Heather Earler, staff for this application. We have two changes. One was to the staff report to add the condition that was requested regarding, and I'll read that condition because it's also been added to the, to the resolution as well. The vacation and abandonment shall be contingent upon approval of the site plan of the proposed property by the Housing Authority of Tarpon Springs, which you did in your last, earlier tonight. And again, that's been added to the resolution as well, along with clarification under section two for the vacation and abandonment. Those are the changes since last reading.
Are there any questions of staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Jeremy Couch with Tampa Civil, 17937 Hunting Bow Circle. I've been sworn. Really no presentation. This is the spine road that was developed, I guess, and granted to the city at some point when the original project was built. It needs to be vacated so that we can reconfigure the parking lot, reconfigure the utilities, and construct the project. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the applicant? Seeing none? Any members of the public wishing to speak in favor of this application? Any members of the public wishing to speak against this application? Would the applicant or staff like to make a final comment or presentation?
Not at this time.
Okay, I will go ahead and close the public hearing.
Thank you. Any commission comments, questions? The chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
No.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. Okay, we now go to the ordinance 2019-08. This is the application 19-28, mail notice radius amendment. This is the first reading. City Attorney?
Ordinance number 2019-08, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending section 98 of Article 6, section 109 of Article 7, and sections 206 and 215.03 of Article 12 of Appendix A, the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, by adjusting the mail notice radius from 200 feet to 500 feet and updating name of newspaper of general circulation, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. The second reading will be held on May 14th, and this was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on March 29th.
Thank you again, Heather Earler, staff to this application, your planning and zoning director. So this application came to fruition. It's been something that the Planning and Zoning Board has been very interested in moving forward. So we are moving that, this application forward at their request. Essentially, what they are looking for is to change the mail notice radius that we currently mail out our notices to from 200 feet to 500 feet to try to pick up additional residents, so there'll be additional notification. With that, this was heard last night at the Planning and Zoning Board. It was unanimously approved by those present at the Planning and Zoning Board. There was one opponent to the application from the public who said that he didn't think that it was necessary, this was necessary at this time. And actually, I, I misspoke. It wasn't unanimously approved. It was a four-to-one vote. We did have the alternate who voted against it. Sorry about that. I misspoke on that. So, and with that, staff is recommending approval of this change based on the recommendation of the planning board and in the interest to increase the mail notification distance that we're mailing out so that more residents are notified. Can you answer any questions that you have?
Any commission, commission caller?
Thank you. I remember sitting on the Historic Preservation Board, and this was an area of concern years ago as well, so I'm happy to see this come forward at this time. Heather, I just wanted some clarification, if you could, for the public. Were 500 feet is measured, is it measured from the corners of the property, so are the residents behind the property getting notified as well, and the front?
Correct. It's measured from all four corners, so the radius is taken out from each of the corners and basically whatever falls within the circle that's created from that, from basically filling in that gap, those are the notifications. And that's done actually by the property appraiser through GIS.
Okay, so this, and I, I know this is getting into details. So if the lot's 100 feet long and the house behind it's 100 feet long, it's also going to hit maybe the next street over too? Okay, great.
And again, if it, if it only hits a partial lot, it's still in that circle, so it'll still pick up. The computer is smart enough to know with the algorithm even a partial lot counts to put in the list.
Okay, the vote no on the, or the individual voted no, or the board member voted no, was there any explanation behind it? Or just saying it was good?
I think that, I think that she just didn't feel that it was necessary.
Okay, I would say based on my experience sitting on this board and other boards that it's, we can, we cannot communicate enough with the residents of Tarpon Springs, so I'm completely in support of this, and thank you for bringing this forward.
I see that as a good thing to notify the people, what's going on in the neighborhoods. I think it's positive. Vice Mayor Terapini?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, sitting on the Planning and Zoning Board before I sat on this board, it was a healthy discussion. I've, you know, heard about it for a long time that we need to increase our radius notification. Echoing on Commissioner Carr, does it cross waterways?
Well, it would be, it, it doesn't really respect the boundary of water, so usually the radius, if there's a wa, if there's a water body, it'll go into that water body, but most of our water bodies aren't going to be a distance unless the property happens to be right on the actual water body where it's taking the radius from the corners. And again, the corners are the guesstimate that the property appraiser has for a lot of the waterway connections. It's not a survey accurate document. It's their guesstimate based on taxing, so.
So it does cross the water?
Yeah, it would go across the water if the water body's narrow enough. Most of the time, it's going to end up into the larger water body.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank the Planning and Zoning Board for their work on this. I think all it does is increase transparency, and I'm glad that we're doing it.
Are there any public comments on this item? Here, none? I will detain the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. Next is item number 29. This is the ordinance 2019-09, the application 1929, HPV appeal. This is the amendment, and this is the first reading. City Attorney, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2019-29, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending section 111 of Article 7 of Appendix A, the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, by adding the ability to appeal and approval of a certificate of approval, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. The second reading will be held on May 14th, and this was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on March 29th.
With that, Heather Earler, staff to this application, your planning and zoning director. This application came to us from the Heritage Preservation Board. They want, they desire to have the appeal language clarified, that a sudden, and the clarification is basically the way it reads now. Only applications that are denied, they feel, this is how they feel, only recommendations that are denied can come forward to appeal. They want that language broadened, that whether there's an approval or a denial of the application, that any aggrieved party can essentially bring an appeal forward to you. So that's essentially the crux of what, what the, what the requested change is. It's a clarification to allow for both appeal approvals and denials to come forward.
Are there any commission comments, questions, commission caller?
I, I understand what Heather, you explained. Just want to reiterate it one more time. So if, let's say, the Historic Preservation Board approved a demolition of a contributing structure due to a cost to rehab the building, and then a resident or a neighbor decides to appeal to the Board of Commissioners, or the Board of Commissioners to hear that, am I correct in saying they can do that?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's what the change would allow.
So typically in the past, it would be just the applicant, the applicant would say, "We were denied, so now we're going to appeal to the Board of Commissioners." So now anybody could technically appeal any decision that the board approves on the Historic Preservation side.
Correct.
Approve or deny?
Yeah, I'm just, don't get me wrong, we, we appoint the Historic Preservation Board to make these decisions, correct? Based on what the code is written. So is there concerns that multiple applications will start being appealed to the Board of Commissions, and we're going to see more of a people's court like we have in some of the other aspects in the past year and a half or so? I just want to avoid some drama that we don't have to bring upon ourselves as a commission, which we have a, a process in place already today. So I'm, I'm happy to go either way, and again, we're putting the Historic Preservation Board in place. We appoint these individuals to make these decisions on behalf of what the code says, but I could be persuaded either way. I, I just want to have a conversation about it and a discussion before we just move forward, approve or deny, et cetera.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Thank you. Let me try and see if I can shed a little light on the discussion. Heather, if, could, could any member of the public appeal the ordinance, I don't know, a rezoning? Isn't there appeal, isn't there an appeal period on a rezoning?
Future land use elements, yes. Zoning would go directly to the court. There is no real appeal appellate process for that. Now, if it's associated, if a zoning is associated with a future land use, there is a state process that, that any of those state land use changes do require approval, but I don't know. I mean, Erica, you'd have to correct me, but I think that a straight rezone goes directly to court. I don't think that there is a.
Okay, so a land use change has an appeal period?
Yeah, because of the way it comes.
Who can appeal that?
Um, any aggrieved party. They have to be, they have to be qualified as an aggrieved party, and if they're qualified as an aggrieved property, property, party under the state law, they would then be the, be able to.
Any party?
Appeal.
Not any party.
Not any party. They have to be qualified by the, under the state law, so whatever the state law lays out as a qualified aggrieved party, they would fit, they have to fit that criteria. That's decided, I believe, by the judge, correct?
There's, yeah, there's a statutory definition. That's why in, in a lot of proceedings, you ask if someone speaks on behalf or against an application, what their relation to the property is, so you can find out if they are an affected or an aggrieved party under the statute.
So I was trying to parallel the two. I mean, in this, in this scenario, I guess, Commissioner Carr, you're saying that any party could appeal it, correct? The way it's being presented?
That's my understanding.
Is that right, Heather?
That's my understanding, the way that it's written.
And that's actually how it's written now too, except for it's not written for an approval. It's just written for denial. And I, I, I mean, I think you can make the interpretation that as it's currently written, it just needs clarification, but as it stands now, it still says any party. I mean, it still says anyone. It just says for a denial, not an approval.
We just, just add in the approval part?
Right, that is all that this is doing, is adding the approve or deny instead of just the denial. Right, that is all that this is doing, is adding the approve or deny instead of just the denial.
Which the aggrieved party could be on either side.
It does, and in this circumstance, the way this is read, it doesn't have to be an aggrieved party. It can just be someone who doesn't agree with it.
I've got a question there, I see that Attorney Trask and yourself both agreed to add this from an appeal perspective. Legally, why would your firm feel that we need to add, as a city, this additional language?
Well, this was brought to us by recommendation of the heritage preservation board, and I am the board attorney for that board, I discussed it with them, and the opinion was that the current code as it sits could be interpreted that any written decision of the board in section B would be able to appeal either a denial or an approval, however, the board felt and we did, we agree that it could use some clarity. You know, if we had to go into court and defend this as it's written, we could, but it would be much easier to defend it with the changes that we're recommending. So this was actually not something that we entertained, this was brought to us by the heritage preservation board, and we agree with the recommendation that they've made.
Okay.
Any public comments on this item? Need a motion?
Seems like there's been thorough discussion from the historic preservation board and our legal counsel, so I'll move to approve.
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry Panny?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes. And now we're going to the item number 30, which is a request to negotiate development agreement with the Pioneer Developers East Lake Drive between Highland Avenue and Keystone Road. Mr. Licurs?
Yes, this is simply, we've had an application put in, so what the board has to do is agree to approve myself and staff to, to meet with them and negotiate a development agreement. That's a requirement of your code, so that's what we're asking for authorization now to, to have me do that.
And once you complete that, you bring it back to us, or we?
Everything comes back to you, yes.
I have no question, any question?
Move to approve.
I have a question. So I just wanted to clarify for myself and for the public, what we're voting on tonight is simply the right to start negotiating and start seeing more detailed plans in terms of development, because I see some wording in here that I would just want more clarification on.
Yeah, obviously when they put in the request to do it, they put some things they wanted to discuss, but again, I have no idea until, till we go into and see, we haven't seen it, so we don't, until you give authority to me and meet with them and negotiate, so this is just authorizing me to go in, staff, go in, sit around the table and see, what do you want? And negotiate something to bring, that I would think to bring back to you that, that you would accept. So again, we really start off with nothing, they did, you know, sometimes when they put the application in, they submit something, sometimes they're just asking, you know, we're looking, we're looking at a development agreement on a project, you know, and we can't really talk and negotiate with them until you give me the authority to do that, so that's why the step of they apply, you tell me, and then I go get the information, meet, do what they want, and again, it all comes back to the youth and through all the processes, it has to go through.
Okay, so the development agreement, all of the language, any further decisions, they're still gonna come back to us?
Everything goes to the public hearing and back to you.
Okay, my, my concern, excuse me, my concern about this specific development actually stems from the first candidate forum, which was actually right here. There was about over a dozen residents from this area that came and asked questions to the candidates at the forum at the time, and it was regarding this specific property. The surrounding residents are all very concerned, I've received multiple phone calls about the annexation. So I'm eager to ask questions in the future about why exactly they would rather get annexed in Tarpon Springs than the county? Is it specifically just because it's the density problem, is it just easier to develop here? I have a lot of questions for them that I'm looking forward to asking. My understanding now from what you've told me is that in order to get to the bottom of these questions, we need to approve the negotiation?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just give permission to negotiate.
Okay.
To ask all those questions that you meant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I know we have a motion and a second, oh, you have a question?
I have a second yet?
I don't have a second yet, but I've just got a question, or a comment to the city attorney, I'm sorry, to the city manager. First, I just want to make clarification, this property is not in the city of Tarpon Springs actually yet, so I've never seen this one yet where we have a development agreement with a someone looking to develop when they're not even part of the city yet, is that typical or we see that? So for instance, if someone wanted to come in, use another example, the Stoffer site, right? And they wanted to do something on the Stoffer site and then annex in per the site plan, that's something that we would do often.
Yeah.
Okay, it's just unique. Secondly, another recommendation I would look at is, based on the information that's provided, it's not a whole lot here guidelines wise, other than it's gonna be a neighborhood, and it's gonna, they're asking for a sidewalk on one side of the road instead of both sides of the road of the development. The part I would ask is that we look at making a sidewalk a little bit bigger than what the normal requirement is, just to it'd be kind of a compromise, I think, for both parties while you're looking at this. And obviously the wetlands are an important aspect of the whole development as well, but I'm looking forward to seeing what's coming up based on your discussions with applicants, and the potential of annexing this property into the city of Tarpon Springs for additional revenue for the city.
Commissioner Carr, what I recommend is if you get with the city manager, and meet with him and express all your concerns and all your suggestions, so when he goes to negotiate, he has the ideas with him, that'll be the best way to do it.
I don't have any questions.
And again, there may be more, they just outlined, they didn't really have to outline.
Probably a lot more than one.
There's probably a lot more involved in this, it's not, I don't think we're just gonna be dealing with those items, and we may be, be dealing with some items that I know this board may concern with, it's not on the list, so.
Sorry, I have a motion, but I do not have a second.
You have a second.
Are there any public comments on this item? Yes.
Paul Robinson, 948 Bay Shore Drive. It's nice that this sounds like a very preliminary request, and it's nice that it's a local development company, on the other hand, there are some concerns here that kind of follow up with the comments that Commissioner Carr and Commissioner Donovan have stated. One is that there are so many specific conditions in the request that it almost sounds like an attempt on the front end to limit negotiation. Mother-in-law apartments? And this is particularly true concerning wetlands. When we see the phrase wetland mitigation plan, that specifically means destroying wetlands on site. Mitigation may be in some form down the line, we don't know what kind of form, but it means destroying wetlands. And the timing of this is a little troublesome, we've talked a lot about the need for sustainability. And why are we talking now about at this point in April? Destroying wetlands, mitigating wetlands rather than preserving wetlands. So I would just urge caution and transparency here. Thank you.
Just for clarification, when the agreement comes back to us, it's still gonna be on the public hearing, so we'll be, everything will be discussed, everything will be screened. Thank you. Any other public comments? I hear none, I need a motion?
I have a motion.
Oh, I have a motion in a second, roll call please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry Panny?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes, thank you, well that concludes the agenda tonight. And we go to staff comments, Chief.
Thank you Mayor, since we will not be meeting until May 14th, I just wanted to remind everyone, we'll be getting information out that on the 15th, we'll be having our annual memorial service for our fallen officers in front of the Public Safety Facility at 6:00 PM. We'll be getting information out on that, so I just wanted to kind of put that out there, thank you.
What day was that again?
I'm sorry?
What's the date again?
Uh, May 15th at 6:00 PM, we'll get, we'll probably in next week or so start getting stuff out on that.
I have nothing.
Thank you for being here today.
It's always a pleasure.
Thank you. Mr. Licurs?
Just want to go over something I sent for you because it's some good news and it's something on a major stormwater project that we have probably been talking about for a long time, it's the Pent Rose Project, it's at the top of our list, the projects. And I know the mayor with his infrastructure, I think I'll be getting something or have something that's his item for the work session and is, you know, infrastructure, but this is, this is very important, this is something we've needed. Obviously, one of our worst areas is the bowl, I call it, because if you look at the biography of Tarpon, it's the this area to the side of City Hall is a big bowl. So obviously, when you had all the problems, you all have had the calls who've been in office a while from all that area, from Pent Rose and beyond. This is a major over $3 million project, not only stormwater, but a lot of, a lot of things connected with it to try to collect, correct all the flooding that goes on. So to be able to go back after originally got about a $400,000 grant, we had a chance to gamble and, and go for a higher one and, because we, we just knew that everything that we had in this project met all the criteria for Swiftwood, this was the ideal project that met the criteria for the grant. We went for it, and of course, I told you, 1.1 million 368,400 dollars is gonna be given to us 100% for construction on that major project that's at the top of our list to begin the problems we have in the bowl area, the older area of Tarpon, just east of City Hall, so. So our staff did a great job. I remember, if you remember, a while ago we went to you to tell you we were gonna apply for this one, even though we had the $400,000 one. So it's a great success, and Mayor, you can stop a few days of infrastructure.
Bugging you on that, eh?
So I just want to announce that to the public that it's a, it's a major, major grant to solve, to help us solve one of our major problems in this town.
Just tell everybody, thank you, appreciate that. Ms. Jacobs?
I just would like to thank the mayor and commissioners for the proclamation this evening, and also thank my staff in the clerk's office, because I'm very fortunate to have such a great team.
Thank you for everything you do. Commissioner Carr?
Thanks Mayor, wanted to just give a quick update about my communication with Senator Scott's office. Talked to Grace, one of his staff members last week, and she asked if the city had applied for appropriations, and I told her I wasn't sure, so I reached out to Mark and sent him the form, which he forwarded to me. I got an email, or received an email today from Trish replying back to Senator Scott's office, and this is pertaining to the additional turn basin for additional funds, which is a million plus dollars, and asking for an appropriation for this specific as a separate project through the federal government. So hopefully, we could have the support of Senator Scott with this project, the secondary part of the project, and we'll have some funding here with some good news, so looking forward to hearing back about that. I think that's good news from their end, that they're willing to work with our city in this and take it up the ladder. Secondly, Mark, thank you for bringing that to our attention about the grant, again, great job, please express to all the staff that the board's really excited about this, and all the other projects we get to do now with that additional 600 or 700,000 dollars that we don't have to spend. There were some discussions tonight about piggybacking on contracts, and I would fully support that. One of the questions I would ask is, can we have the piggyback contract a part of all the bids? So if we go out to bid, can we also have a piggyback contract from St. Pete or the state of Florida to include in the bid? In the event that that's the best contract offer, makes sense?
What do you mean?
So if you go to bid, and you go out to bid for the companies, and they bid on the project, and you also have a contract that's currently in place with the state of Florida, and that contract's cheaper than the five bids you received, you would go with the state of Florida's bid? Or the state of Florida's contract, because they've already had that pre-negotiated.
We need to ask Jack, I think it's the restriction on that.
I think.
I'm just bringing up for conversation, to look at it, yeah.
I can ask to get a verification.
I just want to make sure that we look at it.
Yeah, I think we...
I agree with you.
Before, I think with some kind of restriction, but we need to check that out, yeah?
I agree with you, it sounds kind of, it doesn't sound necessarily that it would work out, but I can, I'm in complete agreeance with Vice Mayor Terry Panny about this, about getting more local businesses and, and just bidding these out.
And again, I believe all, what, what we can do though, if that was to happen, we'd see they were excessive from other piggybacks, we'd just reject all bids and, and
Oh, that's a good point.
Go to an alternate to the piggyback, I mean, that, that, what I would see, and I'll get with purchasing for all the things, but for instance, there's something, we know there's piggyback contracts out, but we want to bid sun, those bids come in, we compare them, and then I, I think this board would just be rejecting all, rejecting all bids, but I'll check all that for you. When I bring that back, get you the list of all the ones we do, that we can discuss that.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you Vice Mayor for bringing that up and having the discussion. Lastly, I just want to say, Commissioner Donovan, I think you're doing a great job, I know you're, you're new to the board setting here. You're asking some great questions, so keep up the great work, and thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Wanted to tee back on something that was brought up, Mayor, about your desire and request to move forward with infrastructure project. When we participated, I don't know if you were on the board or not, Mayor, but with the Bay Shore Heights project out by the middle school. Yeah, you weren't on the board, but it was a big, you know, Mr. Robinson was in the commission, I mean, it was a big, it was a big ordeal, we had multiple, you know, different public hearings regarding it, it was, it was a development agreement just like what we just approved, which is the right way to go about it on a project of that magnitude. So, my point is that through that development agreement, we negotiated that the developer increased the size of the lift station in that area for enough capacity for the remaining parts of Bay Shore Drive to go on to sewer, right? Because they're on septic right now, and sewer, uh, let's see, sewer service stops at Sunset and Bay Shore Drive where Nina Astemex House, okay? So, we did development, the development agreement, we had them increase the size of the lift station so we could, in the future, increase our infrastructure to serve us from West Bay Shore down Bay Shore, down Bay Shore, from West Bay Shore to Sunset, right? So we did, thank goodness, we, you know, we, we got that, I recalled it a little bit different, but in terms of where the lift station was going, I had a, a meeting with staff today. The lift station's there, it's just in a little bit different spot, so my point being, is when, Mr. City Manager, I know that we're finishing up a big conversion project in the Lake Butler area, or not in Lake Butler, but the, you know what I'm talking about?
Lake Tarpon.
Yeah. So I know that we're finishing that up, and I'm curious as to when we're gonna get to the Bay Shore project. So if we, you know, if you can give, give us an update on when we foresee finishing the Bay Shore Drive sewer completion?
We've also got Seabreeze too, we're in the, we're in the process.
We got Seabreeze too, with Seabreeze is not as many units, but I'm curious.
Those are the two we got working, so, so you want to know when we can work?
Yeah, I want to know when we're gonna finish hooking up, I mean, now that Bay Shore Heights is, is done, lift station's there, that was a huge component to the city's future expansion of our sewer service, right? So that lift station is in place, now that it's in place, and Bay Shore Heights construction has kind of died down a little bit, you know, I'd like to know when we're gonna finish up.
And that would be at the top of the list because it's near water, as you know, when we did the criteria and stuff, so that is right there with Seabreeze, that's why Seabreeze.
The lift station was like, that was huge, that was like one of our feather in, in our hats in regard to the development agreement, yeah, is that we have the developer put in a lift station with enough capacity for us to finish hooking up our residents on Bay Shore Drive, on the water, on the bayous, etc. So there's that. And then the piggybacking thing, you know, that, that goes back to when I was on the budget advisory committee, I think we even have something in our procurement now that says that if you are a local company, you do get some kind of a two-point credit, I thought it was five, I was gonna say five, is it five? I think it's 5%, I think, I think it's five.
We did it.
So we did it, we did it, which was a good thing, I mean, it's the, the discussion and the reasons for that, we could sit here until 2:00 AM to talk about circular economics, but the point is, is that it was recognized back then, we did do something, there's absolutely an economies of scale to piggybacking, and there's a right time and a right place to do that. Buying, you know, widgets for City Hall and generators and things like that of that nature, I'm all about it, I get it, but when it comes to like bricks and mortar things, or like actual physical labor things where we have, you know, 50 different landscapers in the city of Tarpon Springs, I don't care if we pay a little bit more for it, at least we're giving the local guys the opportunity to win the business, and then you have circular economics that go through the town tenfold, so as we bring back these things to look at, that we, procurement items that we piggyback on, it's, you know, certain things I agree that we, you know, get in economies of scale and buy better through, through that procurement process, but in things that we can you know, try and give to the local guys, at least the opportunity to bid on, I think that we could 100% do that. That's all, thank you.
Thanks for bringing, thanks for bringing that up, this is something that we've done, we've had six years ago.
It was longer than that, it was probably closer to ten, it was before I was.
That was to, you know, to help the local, local business, I think it's very. a great thing to do. Just since we're talking about the, uh, the Bay Shore, just so you know that, uh, we're working on a project to install the, I think it's already been completed, a check valve, so when you have a high tide, the water doesn't go into the, uh, you know, the Bay Shore, you know how low it is?
Yeah.
You know, so I think that's going to be corrected. We have to wait and see, now when it's a really extremely high tide, if it really works, but I think it does.
Well, where you're talking about, where the, where that valve is, is right where the lift is?
Yeah, it's close to that, yeah, yeah.
And it was, it was, originally it was supposed to go at like, or I, conceptually it was going to go west Bay Shore and Bay Shore, I'm talking with staff today, it was moved to a lower point so that for gravity, they can bring it down to the lift, which makes perfect sense.
So the, the check valve is supposed to help there, too.
Good.
Anything else you got?
Sure.
Okay. I, I, I have some announcements to make that...
Commissioner Donovan?
Oh, sorry.
There's no one here today, so it's been...
You always have to be the last one.
You all, man, go ahead.
It's been lonely, it's been lonely. Um, yeah, I just had two, uh, two kind of updates for you guys. Uh, one, that budget breakdown I mentioned in my commissioner comments, uh, last week. Um, again, just a super simple caveman terms sort of breakdown of taxpayer expenditures monthly, um, hopefully, ideally at the end of the month, whatever our last commission meeting is for that month, just showing the taxpayers certain projects and exactly where their taxpayer money went that month, breaking it down department by department, just in a couple of simple graphs and bullet points. Uh, I'm actually having a meeting tomorrow, uh, with the city manager and a couple of different department heads, um, to talk about that, so hopefully I'll have more updates for you on March fourteenth. Um, and then the other thing, I just, I just was curious, um, I know Ray is not here, but, um, on, if you guys have came any, any closer to our work session topics, um, for May, I know I saw Jacobs in an email, um, but I think the way we left it off last time is that everybody's going to get one topic, am I, am I correct in that? Um, so I just want to make sure I pick, you know, a, a good topic. Um, have you guys narrowed yours down or, um, decided yet?
Go ahead, I would have said my, go ahead, Mark.
Well, the ma, mayor's is going to be on, on, on infrastructure, which I haven't got, we're seeing if an email is lost, and we've had some email problems the past day or so, so I, I will forward, I have, I didn't receive it as of five o'clock today, but if it's in there tomorrow, I will forward, as each of them send them in, I'll forward it to everybody so they know that that topic's taken, so we don't have double...
Okay, yeah, please do, because I didn't get the email.
Couple days ago, it just never, nobody got it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine, okay.
I think I gave Mark one, but now I can't remember what it was, it was in person, I should have wrote it down, but I think it was, may have been public art. Maybe I'm just...
Trying to remember, I, I got it, I think I got it down, so...
I don't know. Well, I'll send an email.
So email problem.
Okay, all right, no big deal, awesome, I'm good then.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, the announcements I have to make is, uh, Saturday, April twentieth, we have the Earth Day Celebration and community cleanup from nine A.M. to noon at the, uh,